I'm looking on pulling up the presentation materials that I brought with me today. Before I do that, I thought I'd introduce myself a bit. I am new to the role at the Botanical Garden, but I'm also new to Greater Des Moines. I am relocating with my family from Chicago, back to my home state of Iowa. I grew up in the Quad City area, got my undergraduate degree at the University of Iowa. I'm very, very happy to be back in the state of Iowa where I've spent so much of my life and closer to my family. My sister and her husband and their two children have been in Greater Des Moines for over 20 years. My parents retired here to be close to one of their two kids. And so I've spent a lot of time in this community and am very, very, very happy to officially
I'm sorry, did you say University of Iowa?
I did say that.
I just like hearing that again.
Yeah, yeah, I did say that. I did. I don't mind repeating it over and over again if you'd like. I will say, I like that too. I will say, one of the things that's slow to relocate is I am having some allergy reactions. So if you catch me putting a cough drop in my mouth, it's because the urban environment of Chicago does not match up with, you know, the very green and beautiful part of the country that I now reside in. And my allergies need a little catch-up. So bear with me. I apologize for my voice. Okay. I can roll with the punches on a Monday morning. It's not a problem. Oh, you've got the materials. Good. I didn't bring a copy, so. Thank you. I appreciate your flexibility. Let's see here. It would be the GMBG. Yep. Yep, that's it. So today, what I am very pleased to share with you is just a review of some of the, where we've been, right? We'll level set, we'll do a little context setting, because this is not the first time that the city council has reviewed information like this. And a number of your committees and commissions, and forgive me if I'm not getting all the titles correct, have also been actively involved in this process. Also walk you through where the garden currently is. We've made some updates in the past year in particular, but really do a little level setting that way. And then we'll talk about the refresh of the Site Master Plan from the original 2012 version and bring up for each of you some of the highlights of what we intend to do over the next decade. Throughout, please let me know if you've got any questions. I'd be more than happy to address them. So the mission of the Greater Des Moines Botanical Garden is exploring, explaining, and celebrating the world of plants. We're very excited to participate in that process. The intent of the Site Master Plan refresh is really to engage the community in a very deep way. We want people to come and spend more time with us. We want people to come and enjoy longer visits, learning more about plants. Thank you so much. I'll let you do that. We want to very much be a part of the arts and culture fabric of Greater Des Moines. We want to incorporate the river and the riverfront along with the River Trail, much more intentionally than has been our reality in the past. Thank you. Let's see if I can. Do we have it? Okay. Yes. Yay, it works. Okay. We'd like to be able to also address education very intentionally again, going back to the Des Moines Water Works roots and connections to the Greater Des Moines Botanical Garden, as well as increasing sustainability in a number of different ways for the garden and really creating lovely, robust experiences in the outdoor spaces. So as, I will not go through each one of these in detail, but as you can see, the Greater Des Moines Botanical Garden has had connections to this community for many, many decades. And really, the connections, as I referenced, to the Des Moines Water Works and all of the infrastructure to the community has been deep and rich throughout. Back in 2012, the Greater Des Moines Botanical Garden really became what began to become what it is today, in terms of becoming its own 501(c)(3), assuming responsibility, leadership operation for the 14-acre site in 2013, and then really accomplishing by the end of 2015, the first phase of the original Vision 2012 Master Plan. The progress has continued. Back in 2019, we began conversations with Riverfront Development Authority to assume responsibility and stewardship for the Robert D. Ray Asian Garden. Those stewardship discussions and progress continues today. We're very, very close. Last year, last August, the Rouen Reflection Garden was completed and open to the public. And we are underway with our Founder's Garden, which really is paying homage to native Iowa Dry Meadow. And I will begin to share some information with you later in the presentation. So this Vision 2012 Plan was the original Site Master Plan. And this is from, everything that we're discussing today comes from this Vision 2012 Plan. The water features, the Dry Meadow, the various different interactive and art focal points throughout the garden. Phase 1 in the red is essentially what's been completed. That is the garden that you all know today. Hopefully, you know it well. And if you, if you don't, come and visit us and we'll be happy to reintroduce you. The future phases, that tan section is what we're really going to be focusing more on today. That is the intent of the Master Plan refresh. Again, taking those foundational components from 2012 and making them relevant and intentional based on where we are as a community today. So currently, I mentioned the Robert D. Ray Asian Garden, which is just on the other side of the highway. We're working very intentionally with Riverfront Development Authority and the Asian Alliance to assume stewardship of that garden. We've made a lot of progress just in the last few weeks, and I'll share a few updates with you. In addition, the Rouen Reflection Garden opened in August of 2020. So those are the two newest components of the Botanical Garden. Here are some images, the Rouen Reflection Garden with the water feature. Again, that water feature was built into the 2012 Vision Plan. And over to the right, the really lovely pathway that surrounds that. So you can see through those trees on the far right side in the right image, the water feature. It really gives you two very lovely views. And then here, the Robert D. Ray Asian Garden. Since the spring, more than 24,000 plants have been added. We have received permits to begin the boring that is necessary to connect the irrigation from the existing Botanical Garden irrigation system under the, under the overpass, I think I said that correctly, over to the Asian Garden. And just last week, the newly carved finials were installed, and they're beautiful. The lions will be, the newly carved lions will be reinstalled very soon. And then, once all of these steps are taken, we will move toward officially assuming stewardship within the Botanical Garden. So as I mentioned, we are actively underway with our Founder's Garden. We have, as I mentioned, a number of different committees and commissions have been actively engaged in this process. This garden is, as I said, paying homage to native Iowa Dry Meadow. This is transformed from the Edibles Garden from the original 2012 Plan, which is being kind of relocated to another spot. And the sculpture from the Vision 2012 Plan is also being incorporated into this. You see the image on the right is the latest rendering just from a couple of weeks ago. And the two yellow sections, if you will, with the unusual shaped ovals, those are what we call berms. And those will be native Iowa plants in lovely berm kind of plantings, native seeding. And then in the center is the sculpture. Excuse me. Here are some first-to-be-seen images of the sculpture that is being handcrafted in Spain, actually. The artist is Juan Ho Novella. We are doing this sculpture in partnership with the Des Moines Public Art Foundation. And this sculpture is in honor of Tom Urban and all Mr. Urban did to bring the Botanical Garden into reality. It is, as you see in the renderings, it is a gigantic piece of art. And along that riverfront, I think will be a spectacular draw into the Greater Des Moines community for so many. And we're very, very excited to have this become part of the Botanical Garden.
And Kim, this might be a good time to add that this was privately funded.
Yes.
You have a donor.
That's correct.
That is paying for all of this.
Very important point, Linda. Thank you. Yes, absolutely. The private funding, both for the Dry Meadow Garden itself, but also for the sculpture, completely privately funded. In addition, the, once the sculpture is installed in the Botanical Garden, it will be transitioned to our stewardship as well. So again, through that private, that collaboration with the Des Moines Public Art Foundation. Here are some images of what we're trying to accomplish on those berms. The beautiful Dry Meadows, very lovely floral options. Here you see a number of different seed mixes in the photographs. And we're absolutely thrilled to really focus on native Iowa seeds and plants. In addition to everything I've shown you so far, pardon me, what's next with the Site Master Plan refresh are the things listed here. And I'm going to go through a few of those. But you'll see, these are really some different kinds of options that the Botanical Garden does not employ right now. We do not currently have a lot of opportunity to explore and explain and celebrate rainwater and what it means in a garden, what it means in the world of plants, and how we can do some very simple things to educate others about the importance of that. As I said, we'll be very intentional about drawing in the river and the trail. And then there are also built into this components that are addressing some of the necessary replacement and improvement that everyone understands as part of an aging facility. And I know that that is something that this council and other committees have paid important attention to, and we are absolutely committed to making sure that's done. So the amphitheater, again, these are not, I'm not sharing this in order of accomplishment. None of the phasing has been determined, but there will be an amphitheater incorporated into the Site Master Plan refresh so that we can, again, leverage the hillside, the natural topography, as well as creating more interaction with the riverfront directly. Pardon me. These are some renderings, again, just to give you a sense of scope compared to the size of the people there. We have intentionally placed a river café very near to the bike trail. We want to be able to interact, again, very intentionally with the patrons along the riverfront and the bike trail. This will include restrooms, storage for services, and likely another entrance into the Botanical Garden along the riverfront. And again, access and accessibility is built into this plan throughout. Here are, again, some images and photographs of something that is similar to what we're envisioning for the space. The edibles that were originally in the Vision 2012 component of the, what is currently the Dry Meadow Garden, will be incorporated closer to the café. The Willow Garden is another component. Again, really creating some unique and fun interactions for families and members of the community. We hope to be able to, for instance, create some immersive play opportunities, sand play areas, but also making sure that the horticulture and that the native willows of the area are highlighted throughout. The canopy walk is something that, as I've had these conversations, a number of people are very excited about. We want to be able to leverage that natural topography again up to university. Again, this is something that is being designed for accessibility for all. It will include other services and rest stops. And then also, the vision is to incorporate a treehouse for community meetings, perhaps business meetings, retreats, things like that, picnics. And so again, here are some images that are inspiring of the design that we pulled together. And so in addition, we talk about the other kinds of updates that go back to Phase 1. So doing those connections to the riverfronts, we've got a little updating that we need to do. We'd like to refresh our entrance. We want to connect east to the pedestrian bridge. And again, going back to accessibility, improve our outdoor garden access up from the existing areas on the, on that far side of the dome. So cost estimate, this is schematic design only. We've not done a lot of the detailed assessment to determine what costs will be. Seventeen to 23 million is what we're expecting to invest over the next decade. We have not publicly begun our active fundraising, and that certainly will happen going forward. We are very committed to making sure that we have an ongoing opportunity for community members to give us feedback on this, on this Master Plan refresh. We would very much like to, as a component of this, stay very focused on our mission, but also build sustainable business plans to implement as we operationalize this plan. This has to be sustainable for the garden. It has to be sustainable for the community. And we are committed to making sure that that's done from the very beginning. We are also very committed to making sure that we are building public-private partnerships with other nonprofits, with other public entities, to make sure that we are not only sustaining the investments that we're making, but that we're developing something that truly makes a difference here in the Greater Des Moines community. That's one of the things that I'm most excited about, being a part of this organization, being a part of this community. That is what drew me here from Chicago, is building the Greater Des Moines Botanical Garden to be a true community-serving organization. Yes, what we do is all about plants. What we do is about exploring, explaining, and celebrating the world of plants. We know and we're committed to making certain that what we do within the world of plants makes a difference for the, a difference for the people here in the community and for those that are needing some help. And ways that we can make a difference in that is something that we're incredibly committed to do. So with that, I would be more than happy to address any requests, any, anything that I can address. I'd be happy to address.
Thank you, Kim. That was a great presentation.
My pleasure.
Council members, any questions for Kim? Yes, Bill?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I grew up about four blocks away from there, just east of Lutheran Hospital. And I can tell you what, what's the kind word to say? Crap-hole that whole area was when we were kids. There was a narrow gauge rail line that ran through there, ran along that riverfront, then just to the west of Lutheran Hospital and cut over by Cleveland. And as kids, we'd play down there, not knowing all the dangers that were coming out. To put this in and resurrect this area from total abandon and doing the wonderful things you're doing sure puts a smile on my face. Keep up the great work.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Any other questions for Kim? Yes, Connie?
When you talk about the edible gardens, the, you know, the need for the food and getting people, and we have a sustainable group that are looking into urban farming, and you see that incorporated even more?
I do.
Than just edible garden?
I do. And, you know, I think one of the ways that I see that really being something within our future is that what we do as a, as a member of the community does not have to strictly be based in the space, this 14-acre piece of land. And so if there are ways that we can partner with community organizations to leverage what we know, what we do well, right? And to make that difference within other people's land, within other people's gardens, those are, pardon me, those are some of the ways that we're looking to make a difference.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And Kim, you probably don't know this, but we have an edible garden right outside the doors here.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, my grandkids come and they pick strawberries. There's a whole planting of strawberries.
That's fantastic to know.
Come down and eat.
In some ways, I think you're right. I mean, certainly, you know, we're not going to make any of these physical investments until we've got the funding to support it. That being said, you know, we've learned a lot just in moving our process forward with the implementation of the Founder's Garden. And I think every one of those details that we've learned influences what we know about the land itself, what we know about the space, and also what phasing makes sense. For instance, it doesn't make sense for us to start Phase 1 all the way up by university if we've got space that's closer to the garden that we're already actively maintaining and having guests visit and things like that, right? So it's, I think, part of the intentionality that we're bringing to this is to make sure that we're making smart decisions, that those investments are wise, that we're not investing in something that will later have to be redone if we construct something, you know, in a different phase, right? And so doing that assessment, I think, is one of the things that we're prioritizing, to be able to phase this out well and responsibly.
Thank you, Kim. Any other questions for Kim? Well, with that, thank you very much for being here.
It's a pleasure. Thank you for having me.
Come back. You're doing a great job. There's already excitement out there.
Thank you.
And council, if you've not been to the Rouen Garden yet, please come down there. And when we get ready to celebrate with the, with the new sculpture, we want to be sure that everybody.
We will have a grand opening. I will preemptively extend an invitation to each of you now, but you'll hear from us again. And if you haven't been to the garden in a while, every Thursday night, we have music in the garden. And last Thursday, we had over 350 people with their blankets and chairs on the cane garden. It was fantastic. I would love to have you come and visit with us. So please join.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
And thanks to Ben Page for all that you do, Ben. Thank you very much. You're lucky to get to work with him.
I'm telling you why I'm lucky. Thank you all so much.
Thanks, Kim.
Thanks, Kim.
With that, we'll move on to our electric vehicles, alternative fuels.
Good morning, council.
Good morning, Nick. Thank you for being here.
Absolutely. I'm here to talk about the fleet strategies that we have for reducing emissions. As we go through this presentation, you'll see kind of about two overarching approaches that we're kind of looking at. One is our EV approach, and the other one is the biodiesel approach as well, to kind of, to reduce the, to reduce emissions. So just to kind of give you a background as to where we're sitting for our fleet composition, if you exclude our fire department, because they work, maintain their own. So for our fleet department, run by Brian Bennett back there in the center, we have about 1,060 vehicles and pieces of equipment, varying from cars, SUVs, vans, we have a couple motorcycles and dump trucks and different things like that, as well as, when you're talking about the pieces of equipment, they vary from ranges of lawn mowers all the way up to bulldozers. So wide array of pieces of equipment and vehicles that we maintain and fuel. The, the amount of fuel that we kind of work through in our calendar year 2020, we had about 408,000 Gasol, which is that ethanol mix, as well as our diesel is 436, almost 437,000. We did start using B-100, which is 100% biodiesel, no fossil component to that at all. With that, though, it's, has to be during kind of the warmer months instead of the colder months. Same with what we are doing with the B-5 and the B-20. We run now at least at B-5 throughout the whole year, and B-20 during the warm weather months for all of our pieces of equipment and vehicles that take diesel. Our reduction strategies, like I had mentioned before, is to electrify as many sedans. That's what our current, the current market, the way that we purchase our vehicles through the EVs, incentives that are available. And we are currently monitoring all the different availabilities of a different, different style. So SUVs, pickup trucks are on the verge, I think, for us to be able to purchase. The only problem is that right now is during the procurement process that we go through, it's not currently available, and we've got some projected dates that could be through that purchasing process that we have. Yes, Josh?
From, from a strategy perspective, do we evaluate whether or not we're sort of rightsizing the vehicles? So, for example, if there are more vehicles that could potentially be sedans that are currently.
SUVs, different things like that.
Or light duty trucks?
Yes, there is a FOC, Fleet Oversight Committee, that consists of Matt Anderson, the deputy manager, myself, and Mary Nishel as the procurement administrator as well. Three of us kind of oversee any, any changes that need to happen. From that, it's based off of the, the work that Fleet Manager Brian Bennett and the analyst that he works with is Jay Carlson, a budget analyst too. And they review the annual replacement plan that the departments come up with, and they are the ones that kind of work with them to see if there needs to be adjustment on vehicles, whether it's from a sedan to SUV or SUV sedan.
Yes, just something about the procurement. Do you have to do something? Where you have to?
So the procurement process, the way that we have it to, for us to be able to take the benefit of the tax incentives, since we're tax exempt, we have to go through the leasing process, and we go through that, that kind of approved method that we've gone through has been very beneficial for us. Currently, it's a DNM.
DNM leasing?
Yeah. And so they actually pass through about two-thirds of the, two-thirds or 75% of the rebate to us through that leasing process.
What's the, what's the cost saving this compared to a gas vehicle that we have?
I want to say the current acquisition, we have a slide coming up that actually has it, it's about 22,000 for our EV purchase.
Yep, I see that.
And then.
It's not a purchase, it's a lease, right?
Well, it's a lease within a dollar buyout at the end of the 24.
Okay, okay.
And what's the standard for ICE?
We use a comparator for internal combustion engines, 17,000. The important thing is we projected life cycle cost ownership for that duration. You'll see the slide in the sedans. We've achieved cost parity of lifetime cost of ownership.
Excellent.
Yep, when we take into all the different components of the life costs. So right now, with that process, it's proven, kind of shown that it's beneficial for us for not just the sustainability aspect too. And then the third part that, that we are using for reduction of emissions is this new tech, this technology that we're going to be incorporating on our refuse trucks with conjunction with REG and Optimus. We'll kind of get it. We'll kind of get into the details of that, uh, in a later slide, but, um, it allows for the use of B-100 in our heavy duty trucks. So the refuse trucks are going to be the ones that we see on the roads every day, uh, all throughout the city. So we're going to have those, those are our prime candidates since they get a lot of use, uh, throughout the city, so.
So will you be able to use that in the winter?
Uh, yes.
The B-100?
Yep.
I thought you said you couldn't do that.
Couldn't do that, but this technology allows us to, it's kind of a dual, uh, uh, fueling system, which allows us to have, uh, the B-5 component as well as the B-100, and then it starts up in the B-5 fuel, and as it warms up, it allows that switch when it's ready to that B-100. So it still allows for about ninety-five percent on B-100 even in the, even in the cold months, so. So kind of talking about our first strategy, um, that we have where we're replacing the, the car component of our fleet, um, the acquisition again is that initial, we do initial payment of, of about, uh, twenty-two thousand is the initial payment, um, and then we have that buyout at the end of the 24 months for a dollar. And then, um, there's a reduced maintenance aspect, the operating costs, there's a lot less on the side of our fleet staff. Um, they're still bringing in on a regular basis just to check, to make sure everything is going okay, and checking the brakes and tires and, and, uh, the, the windshield wiper fluid, so. Um, the other part of it too is we're working with, uh, facilities and making sure we have the charging infrastructure in place, um, as we add these, um, vehicles into our, our fleet makeup, um, and, uh, they've been a great help in trying to get that moving forward. And then the, uh, purchasing approach that we have, uh, with this is, um, we kind of go through, we kind of touched a little bit with, with Josh's question, but, um, it's a standard replacement, um, for any of the upcoming replacement of sedans as we go through that. The, um, uh, the Fleet Manager and our Budget Analyst work with all the departments across this, uh, across the city and, uh, work through that with them on a regular basis. They have an annual allocation and they kind of look at their, um, makeup of their department, um, what needs to be replaced, um, in this neck, over the next two years, two to, two to five years. So, um, as we work through that, uh, they determine the needs that they have, um, and what, what's available to, to move on from that. So in that, in that, uh, in that approach, uh, the alternative types may be approved from, like I said, the Fleet Oversight Committee on a case by case basis. So through that, uh, review of need, if there is a change in, um, vehicle type, it's brought up to the FOC for approval to make sure it makes sense.
If you talk about infrastructure, uh, right, but is, is the, you putting in there a career or a leadership?
Um, well, we already, yeah, we already have plans. Uh, currently, we have four, uh, EVs in place right now with car, uh, code enforcement. Uh, we have another fourteen that's coming up, uh, for, uh, for purchase, eleven of which are, uh, for, uh, I think it's inspections as well, and then we have three going for police vehicles as well. Uh, I think it's detectives, um, are going to have three, uh, EV vehicles as well. Uh, for the infrastructure of this, um, yeah, I can't remember. It, it, um, it all depends, uh, on what you have available at the particular location. So for, um, for stuff that would be like in our parking ramps, we already kind of have the availability, so it doesn't quite as, uh, cost as much to get the infrastructure in there, um, whereas if it's a brand new location, um, uh, in just a, a lot, it, it does cost a little bit more because we have to actually run the lines. So it varies between, most of the, the stations that we buy are, um, of the two per station, so it works out pretty well in, in grouping on our, on trying to get eleven at one time. So it allows us to plan, uh, for, uh, our area, so.
So we're doing that in this?
Yep.
Multiple ones in that?
I think so, yep. Uh, not, not off the top of my head, no. Yeah. Yeah, some of, yeah, I was going to say, some of it too is, um, I think it, for this round, I believe we also have some Mid-America, uh, money as well that kind of went in for some of the, some of the stations. Mid-American.
Yeah. Question in terms of, is the charging as to, is the?
No, and, no, and, and the, what we found on, on average for any of our vehicles is the ranges that we're seeing, um, are within, within any of the vehicles that we're, that we're purchasing. So there should be no need for midday charging.
Right, not, not even just, hey, you don't, you don't need a one charging vehicle, it's, it, and there, it, I mean, my understanding is that the technology exists that you can even switch around.
Yeah, where you have multiple.
Charging stalls.
Yeah, where you have multiple.
What, uh, go ahead, Josh.
We lost him.
I just wanted to follow up question to his. So what, what type of, uh, I know there's different charging types that you can put into how fast they'll charge. Are we doing the ones that, you know, will charge it in four hours or two hours or seven hours?
I think we're just on a regular twenty.
For, for sedan use, it would be eight hour or over nine hour.
Okay.
And there certainly isn't merit to, as the text, that, uh, the range of full charge is several days worth of work. So on a, on a department at a division level, we're going to be carrying, uh, one of the one, especially facilities is a retro thing. Full of different story in N S C two, it's all built into the.
And so I, I think our attention too is to try and get it as many, as many in place as possible because.
Just to be ready.
So that we can be ready going forward. It doesn't need to be one for one, but we want to kind of have as much availability as we can because we know that that's not just from a car standpoint, but we see the horizon of, of the rest of the vehicles.
Well, I mean, yeah, Ford's making F-150s, I mean, they're, I mean, if that, if that's what we're leaning towards and, you know, we're, we're going to have to plan for in the state and, you know, we talked about it through the NPO, we're going to have to talk about, you know, charging stations throughout, everywhere.
I guess I have a question, as we plan this infrastructure, are we thinking about, uh, vehicle to grid as well? So if we have a fleet of, uh, of vehicles, I mean, we have batteries that could potentially be useful in going in the other direction. Um, and, and I don't know what we need to do from a, from a planning perspective and, and if, what exactly the cost would be, but I would be curious about, about those vehicle to grid benefits. I, I mean, at times, we could be on utility rates where, where if it's a, a peak time, we could, we could use our vehicles to, to avoid higher cost electricity and then charge them back at night.
At night instead.
And there's, there's savings benefits there, but that's also, uh, that's also going to, I think, be part of some of the long-term utility strategies. And, and so if we're starting to invest in the infrastructure, we should be thinking about the full range, e- even though.
Sure.
That's sort of very new right now, but I.
Yeah, I can touch base with Jeremy and Jim on making sure that that's being incorporated in their thought process going, going forward.
Yeah.
So what do you anticipate the life of this, uh, you know, once we get through the lease and we purchase it? What is the life of the battery and how, do we just replace the battery and how do we dispose of it? How long do we keep the vehicle?
Um, usually, like right now, our average life on our, on our vehicles are about nine years. And so I think in that window of time, um, we should be fine with the existing, uh, battery life of these.
Do we have a place to where, if, if not, if we have to switch the battery, I mean, where, where's all the batteries going to go, I guess, my question, that, that we're responsible for?
Um, it would, it would basically go through our regular disposal process of, of our vehicles, because I think at this point, most of our vehicles are, um.
Does it go to the landfill or do we have a special spot that it goes to or how, where is it, do we know?
Anything that we've exchanged in a gas electric with the battery exchange?
Yep.
We would anticipate, for example, it'll, it'd be, the Nissan lease here, eight year, uh, warranty, battery pack. So if we were beyond that, if it's outside of warranty, we would be at a game. There, there is, uh, actually recycling, we, we would not.
Yeah, we would. So would our policy be to keep it after warranty? Or wouldn't, wouldn't it be smarter to say, okay, if the warranty's out, we would, we would exchange that vehicle after eight years if the, if the battery is? Would we keep it longer than the warranty?
I think it depends, it depends on, it depends on the vehicle use, how much we've used over the course of that time. Um, because you kind of have to look at, you know, how long is, how much degrade you're actually seeing in the vehicle as well.
And hopefully the body. We're still going to need tires and brakes and.
Yep. Well, the brakes are less in, um, in an EV versus, uh, internal combustion because the, uh, progressive brakes.
I mean, I think in other places, we've seen that these vehicles last longer.
Than the warranty.
Well, it certainly has the warranty, but, but, I mean, there, there are just fewer parts breaking because internal combustion. So the same things that save the maintenance, it's just, it makes for a potentially more reliable vehicle in the out years. Um, it, is there an openness to extending the, the life? Like right now, we're averaging nine years for, for vehicles. I mean, I assume it'll be based on.
Absolutely.
On how they're performing.
Yeah, so the way that we have approached our, our vehicle replacement is, um, we've kind of, uh, worked with the departments to say, you have got a dollar allocation. We don't specifically replace, uh, a, a vehicle right as soon as it comes to our, our normal, uh, planned time. Um, they can prioritize if something is six years and, and is, is not performing what, the way it needs to, uh, we will, the department has the option to, to replace that if, if it makes sense. Uh, if the, uh, maintenance cost of it outweighs, you know, needing to replace the, the unit. Um, and so in that regard, there, there's going to be some vehicles that, that vary on the very high end and some that might go a year or two earlier than, than we originally anticipated. So, and that goes with, with the pieces of equipment as well, so.
So are we bonding for these or are we paying cash?
We're paying, we're paying cash for, for our EV. Yep. And same with our other vehicles as well. We're not, we're not bond, uh, we're not bonding for any of our fleet.
But they're lasting nine years.
Mm-hmm.
If not longer.
Yeah.
Nick, I got a question.
Yes.
These newer batteries probably eclipse this, uh, trouble we've had in the past, but, uh, these new batteries don't have memory on them, so that, or they do?
No, I, you're right.
Oh, yeah, you, like, if I go out and use it for fifteen minutes a day and recharge it, um, it drops off pretty fast until you get a full, you know, they always told us, use your battery until it goes dead the first time and then fill it back up and, and you should be okay because the memory's wiped out. Is it batteries now, are they that way or are we be running into some issues?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
What you find is in smart charging system, in fact, the Nissan lease specifically, the manufacturers, that actually, uh, one vehicle manual without actually read, the operation manual, that, that charger will, will stop at about eighty percent. Uh, it, it, you don't want it to potentially top off, that's what leads.
Yeah.
It's, it's just smart charging is advanced to that degree that we shouldn't do instead of that.
So it'll charge up to eighty percent and then shut it off?
Correct, it, it does happen, of course, you might expect, uh, uh, Nissan has a way to see how many times we charge that to what it begins, so we, we want to think that, so. But that, that, that's all taken care of on a smart charging system. It, it knows how much is in the battery, it will stop charging at the appropriate percent.
Okay.
And that, and that kind of allows for, if you have a, a situation that you know that's going to be higher, you can charge between that eighty to a hundred, but you have to intentionally, uh, say that you want to go above that eighty percent. So this is kind of the makeup of our, uh, seven hundred and twenty-six vehicles. Um, as you can see, we've got fifty-four cars, which is currently, um, what we are replacing with EVs. Um, we also have police cars, special units, um, SUVs, vans, pickup trucks and dump plow and refuse trucks. Um, that, uh, composition kind of shows you what we're, uh, what we work with, um, here at the city. And, uh, that top bar, that green bar is the one that we are, uh, focusing on right now for EV replacement. Um, as we look through this, we are monitoring all the different availabilities of each of those categories. Um, and as, as both Josh and Joe had mentioned, um, the pickup trucks, the, the Fords are currently, um, are currently starting to hit the market, um, but the availability of the, uh, commercial, uh, the, kind of the path that we go through our purchasing process from, um, electrification coalition, uh, are, we're seeing that being as, uh, available about the 2023 model for the way that we purchase.
Is there potential to try and prolong the life of some of these vehicles so that they're not referenced with another, or two, like?
No, it's not, Josh. Unfortunately, we're in the fifth year of the first five-year replacement plan with what I deem adequate funding. We were underfunded for fourteen years. So when we launched this first five-year plan with adequate funding, we were a twenty million dollar deficit. If Uncle Bennett had died and said, here's twenty million and you can only use it for this, it would have caught us up. So what you'll see in the, uh, the recommended replacement of, uh, twenty odd vehicles in the next council meeting, the average life, I believe, is twelve years old and we're over a hundred thousand. I, you know, I, I wouldn't want to stand here and say, I can't make it last one year, but we've been making it last one more year for several years, but we, we just have to put safety in our, so there's just not an opportunity this last year of the five-year plan. We're going to launch the next five-year, don't know what the funding is yet, what the allocation is. Uh, we would certainly try to extend any of life out of that until these next categories become viable for our procurement. Great point. I, I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah.
We just, just have to make it last one more year for five years.
Right, this, but there's a chunk of vehicles that have, that we've had for twelve years that are in the replacement. So theoretically, in the next five years, if there are other vehicles rather than replacing it year nine or ten, we could make those last to twelve if we're waiting.
However, we, we, our data will show those years beyond our predicted lifecycle, let's say ten years for a vehicle, those become very costly, not only repair, but it's the percent of downtime to be using it. So we, we can certainly weigh it, but, but I, I, we wouldn't want to just wholesale artificially move that lifecycle cost to twelve years. We, we know the effect of twelve to nineteen. It's a devastating. Uh, we, I just, we just wouldn't want to address that. We'll certainly try to squeeze as much life out that would pan as long as it's safe.
And it is a case by case basis when we look at those vehicles that are being replaced, so. And then also, when you're talking about the, uh, dump, uh, snowplow and refuse trucks, that current market, uh, shows to about, uh, 2025, what we're seeing for the way that we, our procurement process, that would be.
Now, those probably drive more than two hundred and fifty miles during a snowstorm.
Yeah, I was going to say, those are, those are going to have, uh, pretty significant, uh, battery pack than all of the different components have grown up.
Right. What, what is the, you talked about federal incentives, what, what are we getting back from the federal government for this?
Sure. It's still about seven thousand, seventy-five.
Yeah, federal, seventy-five hundred. Our current, we've seen company process yields seventy. Our current purchasing company process yields 75% of that. That is the bank that is behind the leasing company. It's not full path to the real, so it's 75%, 5250, $5,250 is coming off of that to get down to hospitality.
Do we think there's going to be more coming?
5,250? Is that included in the 22,000? That's why it's 22,000.
This conference is now ending. Goodbye.
Goodbye.
But yes, the 22 is after you take off that 52%.
I'll be in sentence.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So to kind of show you the makeup of the car, 52 cars that we have in service, four of them are the Nissan Leafs. Of that, we are looking at the 2022 replacements. Four will be replaced with EVs. Five of them, based off of the fleet oversight, are adjusting to SUV. And one motor pool is determined not to be replaced. And then the future projected.
Could you tell me what vehicles are going from sedan to SUV and why?
Yep, those would be within our detective bureau. They are going into SUV for the cargo as well as the security of those vehicles versus the sedans that we would be going into from the EV standpoint.
So what's the security?
The hatchbacks that we have and the security aspect of those hatchbacks with the arms, the ammunition and guns that they have within those vehicles as well as what they have to transport for evidence and stuff like that. And as the future projected replacements, you can kind of see there the different years that we're seeing and kind of who owns those vehicles. As you can see, we've got three in engineering that we anticipate that, the parks, and then the housing ones that are at the bottom of the slide would be replacing with EVs. And as we look at the other 32, is trying to pair them with either replacing it with the EVs or hopefully in those SUV pickups when they are available as EVs as well. The next category is the increased biodiesel use. As I kind of talked about before, the B20 in the warm weather months that we've incorporated replaces about 50,000 of our fossil fuel diesel that we would be using, which does in, for our calendar year 2020, did reduce 456 metric tons of carbon emissions. Currently, what we are working on right now is with retrofitting existing heavy-duty engines to utilize that B100 gas about 95% of the time. That dual-fuel, the DFT is dual-fuel technology. We are currently working with REG and Optimus to get those on. Those are actually being provided by REG and Optimus, those initial 20. And we are kind of working with other grants to incorporate with the remaining refuges as well as expanding it to the rest, to the existing fleet that we have. The other component of this is as we replace heavy-duty trucks going forward, we will have them standard with the dual-fuel technology installed so that we don't have to retrofit. The nice thing about that is then it's not having to do that additional cost and it's within the specs that we actually get in the vehicles.
So are we still saving money for retrofitting and paying the subscription? I'm sure you did that math.
Well, when, as we get into this next slide, the retrofitting varies in cost between about $10,000 to $15,000. And we're getting a lot of emission reduction for that cost. And that's kind of what we're going at with that.
So we're only going to give emission.
Yeah.
But this doesn't actually save $10?
Well, and the other.
It costs more, correct?
It does. But with that, though, moving into this dual-fuel technology as well, it does kind of allow for the use of that renewal aspect, the sustainability of not just the emissions. It allows us to get many aspects of that.
Purchase renewable fuels.
Yeah, purchasing the renewable fuels, which is a little bit less expensive.
Couple aspects. Great question, Joe. Great question because we will negotiate a few pennies per gallon. It's not going to be huge on fuel cost. The other thing, since some soft costs, I would have to stare into a crystal ball, but we know, there's other local agencies, AIMS, now DOT, Chicago, Washington DT, that are using dual-fuel technology. There's a lot of runtime data and the data is collected every second through cell phone technology. We know that the reduced maintenance, especially the emissions, many of you probably understand as we cleaned up the diesel engine over the last couple of decades, we've just turned them into giant airplanes. And the emission system on our refuse trucks and a modern diesel now are very complex. We know by putting B102 there, it's a cleaner burn. There'll be less repair of those filters, so I just can't quite put that dollar on it yet. So I'm not, the guess, the crystal ball guess would be if we do a capital cost investment of the $15,000, I believe I'd get that back over the life of the truck just in reduced maintenance.
But there's, yeah, there's.
There's probably a wash there and we get, and you'll see here in the next few slides, it's a huge environmental benefit.
I think that's a bottom line. Are we here for environmental benefit? In the long run, if it costs a little bit more for doing better for the environment, then I think it's a cost we should absorb.
And this is a good example. If we talk frequently about how we interact with the state, I mean, biofuels are a huge priority. This is an example of where at least a piece of the future biofuels is. And we can help demonstrate that for our partners at the state who are very much invested in the future biofuels.
And the first 20 that we're doing is actually being furnished by REG and Optimus to get us started. And then from that point, we're working with different herb stuff to maybe get grants for remaining conversion as much as we can.
Right. So they're giving us the first 20?
They're giving us the first 20.
Did we commit to do more after the 20 with them? They're just giving us the 20?
No, we're negotiating those agreements. They'll come forward.
Okay. So that has to be negotiated.
Well, part of the agreement too is that we're purchasing the B100 for the 2011.
Okay, okay.
Right. So to kind of give you.
Right. There had to be something. They're not going to give us 20 for free.
To kind of give you a visual of how the dual-fuel technology works, basically, it defaults on the regular fueling system. And basically, you have that user interface. That's what the driver actually gets to see. Their use of the vehicle does not change as it differentiates between the two different fueling types. It just has a display on how everything is working. With that, you've got two different fuel tanks. For the retrofit, usually what they do is they take the existing tank and parcel it out so you've got two different fills within that same tank. And then basically, there is a lot of the electronic control unit that talks to the interface as well as the remote users have access to be able to look at that. That's Brian's reference to on the phones. When they were viewing, when they were viewing this technology from the DRT, I believe, they were actually watching on their phones and they said, oh, it's switching to the B100 right there on the phone. And the driver confirmed that change. And then basically with that, it allows for the technology of when you go to fuel just the B100, they have smart chips that allows only that fuel to go being pumped into that tank.
Hey, Nick?
Yes, sir.
Why is there a subscription fee?
I believe that's for.
Not much, but.
Yeah, I believe that's for the software to run.
It's built real-time monitoring by the Optimus company because they want to know the health of that truck and exactly what that truck is doing. So it's simply onboard telematics reporting back to Optimus. As a subscriber, we'll have access to that data also.
Okay. Not much.
Which we do, yeah, I was going to say, which we do telematic information.
And that's an annual fee?
For regardless of how many vehicles we have in the fleet, it's not per truck, but for the city.
I would say per truck.
I'm sure it's per truck annually, per truck, which is kind of similar to what we have currently for, yeah, for our Horizon telematics that we are currently using. So it allows us to kind of shift from the telematics that we are using on some of our other vehicles to this subscription.
It's about the environment. It's not about the cost. Can you hear what we said?
From the use of diesel, we've got the different pieces of equipment, which is the 334, varying range from lawnmowers to bulldozers. And then the other vehicles that are using diesel is those dumps, snowplow, and refuse trucks. And this kind of highlights that what makes up the vehicles that use are diesel engines. So from an emission reduction standpoint on the solid waste trucks with the dual-fueling technology, we currently have 35 collection trucks. And there should be two additions that are going to be delivered within fiscal year 22. They consume about 46% of the total diesel fuel that the city does. So that, they make up almost half of what we do for diesel in just those refuse trucks alone.
How many miles is available? How many miles does one truck travel an average day?
55 miles, one truck per day.
55 miles?
$12,000 a year.
Okay.
These are the heavy mover shit.
Yeah.
This is a big buy all-in-one job.
Yeah.
And how many around the street at one time? All 36 out there or is there like one or two spares?
I believe they rerouted this facility coming through.
There's some spares. So in TTRD season, all the spares get done. So there are kinds of.
And just to give you a perspective, back when I was doing the solid waste job, we had four crew, four foremen and about 12 to 13 trucks apiece. So we've done a good job of narrowing it down.
You had to get off the truck and throw it in there, didn't you?
Hey, I'll tell you what.
They're still cities.
They're still cities. Yes, they're, yeah.
I sleep daughter's town. We literally have one crew that goes through and does herbs and they have another whole crew that comes through and they literally still do it by hand. Crazy.
They put it all on the sidewalk.
And if we use 100% fossil fuel diesel, that would be emissions of about 2,600 tons annually if all of those were on that. So between, to get us to about 400 tons annually, it's two different pieces here where if we, the dual-fuel as well as the switch that we do to the B5, B20 during the warm months, that shift, doing this dual-fuel and those changes would get us to be that 400 each year, which is about an 85% reduction. From just the solid waste trucks. And then we will try to expand as funding comes available for the rest of them. And that's all the top. That's all the.
Great. Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Brian. Good presentation. Do we have any additional questions for either gentleman? With that, we.
Hey, geez. I mean, we're talking specifically CO2. Do you know what other environmental benefits? What's the comparison from other pollutants for the biodiesel to regular? Is it mainly just CO2 benefits?
There's no regular, I want to check. What do you need that for?
Yeah, I just appreciate a little detail on that if you have it. That'd be great.
Yeah, I was going to say, we.
There's more metals, so obviously we can, we can.
Yeah, we just try to kind of focus on the one that most is understood by everybody. But yeah, there is a lot more benefits to it as well.
But those other pieces, I mean, these vehicles are in neighborhoods every day and those other pieces are the air quality pieces that are just, that's an improvement in the air that everyone breathes. We should tell that piece of the story, too.
Sure.
Yeah, we'll go, we'll work with, I think, REG and CAC on the aspect of the dual-fueling system and what they've seen from what they've done with DOT and Chantilly as well. Go through that, Iowa, example.
You guys are with Jeremy?
Karen.
Karen?
Yeah.
Sustainability?
Yes, yes, we do. Yep. Last meeting that we had with REG and CAC, Jeremy was in there and he was really excited about the application of this and what this means for our emissions.
I was just going to say, he can really tell the message.
Yeah, so he was, I remember that we proper Jeremy a lot with his last discussions, our REG and CAC.
He's collecting some baseline.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Relative to this project, he can, we can put some metrics to it.
Great, Scott. Thank you very much. Next is Scott Hutchins, who are a director to give a presentation on the wastewater reclamation authority. Thank you, Scott. Welcome. Morning, Scott.
Morning, how are you?
Good. Glad you're here.
Thank you. Well, good morning, city council members. Is the mayor online, too?
I believe he is.
Mayor County's online. Hello? Well, I'm like Gavin said, I'm Scott Hutchins. I'm the WRA director and I'm here to give you a short update on the WRA. I haven't been in front of you. Oh, I guess I did this last April, but it was through Zoom. So I'm here to give you an update on the WRA and some of our accomplishments and some of our projects going forward. So here's a map of the service area. As you know, the WRA serves 17 member communities and we actually added one member community, Grimes. We signed an agreement with Grimes this past year and they will become a member on 71 of 22. So they are in the midst of building a connector sewer up through Urbendale and Johnston and Urbendale to get up to their old treatment plant and they're going to connect to us and they'll be a participating member of the WRA on July 1. As many of you probably are aware, I know Linda and Joe and Mayor County is on the WRA board, so they know a lot of this. But some of you don't, you know, the WRA, City of Des Moines is the operating contractor for the City of Des Moines. The initial term of that operating contract ends on June 30th, 2024. It's a 20-year term and it can be extended year to year, if not terminated by either party. And currently, there's been some talk with the WRA, the WRA board, and the operating contract about reviewing that agreement and we're in the midst of doing that. And Linda and the mayor are on that committee and we continue to have meetings. We've had an initial meeting about that, the operating contractor, operating contract and maybe making some tweaks to it. So more to come on that. But as it says, it goes through 2024 and will continue on year to year unless there's a reason to extend it or terminate it. So right now, we'll continue on with that. As you know, the WRA board appoints the WRA director. I oversee the day-to-day operations of the board and the WRA is a standalone entity. It's formed by a 2080 agreement. We do our own contracting and have our own board of directors, which is 21 members. And all the employees at the, our City of Des Moines Public Works Department employees, all of them that work out there, it's about 105 employees currently working out at the WRA Southeast 30th and Bangalaya. working out at the WRA, Southeast Thirty and Bangalaya. The operating contract, the City of Des Moines provides public works, uh, services, administration, engineering. Uh, like we said, uh, we, we have an engineering staff out there, about three or four engineers. We have an operating, we have an operations department, we also have a, a maintenance department. We have a land application where they take the bio-sols and fly it to farmland fields, and we do all our own flow monitoring, and we have a, a few IT folks out there as well. Engineering provides the contract administration. Like I said, we contract, we do our own contracting, those contracts are actually bid through the engineering department, but they're actually signed by, not the city council, but the, but the WRA board, approved by the WRA board. But engineering department provides all that contract administration, those bidding services. Uh, the legal department provides various legal services for us, reviews agreements, easements, anything legal that we do. We have some, sometimes we have some pretty unusual legal agreements that takes a lot of time, and we appreciate the help that Jeff Skrip gives to us. IT provides our email services and our, our server, our server storage. HR provides all those, and then finance, uh, provides the financial assistance. We do have three finance people out at the treatment plant, um, and Nick Shaw, the finance director, is actually also the WRA treasurer. We'll go a little bit through the WRA budget. Um, this is the current fiscal year twenty-two budget. Uh, we've collected, we'll collect forty-eight and a half million dollars from the communities, uh, and that is spread out, the amount each community pays is based on the amount of flow that they contribute. And I have a slide that'll show that. We have a net operating budget of sixteen point eight million. We also have revenue offsets where we, uh, we have a new facility out there, the biogas or renewable natural gas facility, which I have some, that's gonna be one of the projects I'm gonna highlight. We also do have a hall waste program that generates a significant amount of revenue. Uh, we've borrowed a lot of money for, uh, CIP projects, we have a lot of ongoing CIP projects. Right now, the debt service for that, this current, uh, fiscal year is twenty-seven million dollars. And then we have, uh, four point seven million, which is, we have reserves that we have to maintain to make sure we're doing what we're doing to have money in place to, to do the business we have hand. And then we have a large capital improvement plan budget of fifty-five point eight million dollars this year. And as I said before, the three-year, it's based on a three-year average of flow. Right now, you can see, um, that's the pie chart for all the communities, the seventeen member communities. Des Moines is just under fifty percent. Uh, and I would imagine as we go forward, that percentage will start to go down a little bit, based on a couple of things. One, we're doing a lot of separation projects out of the City of Des Moines collection system, so that storm sewer, that storm art that used to come through the pipes to the treatment plant are now being separated, and we're just gonna get sanitary sewer flow in one of those areas, as well as Grimes is not on this list, they, they'll start contributing about two to three percent of the flow. And then, um, as the suburbs grow, they will contribute more of the flow as well. So, uh, Des Moines flow will slowly go down over time, but it's still gonna be the lion's share, Des Moines is gonna be the lion's share of the, of the flow to the treatment.
Scott, um, is that based on population or flow?
That's actually flow meter. We have, uh, over a hundred flow meters throughout the system, there's forty that are used for billing purposes, because these flow, this flow determines how much you, uh, each community provides to their budget. So right now, as you see, Des Moines pays about fifty percent of the, the O and N budget for, uh, the WRA, and that's, that's based, so there's flow meters. We have a group of three individuals, that their full-time job is to make sure that these meters are up and running and, and are being, uh, running properly. So it's all based on flow right now, not, not population.
So does that mean our costs go down and we have less flow?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
So there's, there's savings with those storm sewer projects, the sewer separation?
Right, and it's kind of, you know, it's a zero-sum game, so that's a hundred percent of the total package there. So if you can get your percentage down as small as you can, you're gonna pay less, and, uh, everybody does their own thing. You kind of see sometimes some shifts if, uh, you know, an Altiuna does some separation projects, their might go down a little bit, and then somebody else sees like, well, we need to do something to keep our, our costs in line. So, yeah, you'll see the benefits from those separation projects.
So do we have any idea how much that is of the savings? I mean, I mean, I was curious, you know, when you see the cost, what it costs to separate in the long run, how much do we save?
To add to the separation part, I don't have that, I don't have that.
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying, I'm interested to see.
I agree, Kyle. I'd be kind of curious to see how much the flow has decreased, but the amount of sewer separations that we paid, I mean, we put twenty-one million into, uh, King Irving Riverbed sewer separation.
Right.
So, um, I would think that has to have a big impact for what you're seeing downstream.
Yeah, and the thing that this is, this is a three-year average, and the reason we've done that is so it doesn't, so if you have a, a dry year or a wet year, it doesn't spike, and, and so it's more of an even, if you're increasing or decreasing, it's slower, it dampens that, so. But it should have an impact, and I could work with the clean water folks and see if we can try to come up with maybe-
Yeah, I was, I mean, it's not a thing that-
No, it's a good question.
I was just curious.
And there should be a pandemic effect on this, right? Like, with, I mean, how is that like, because if people have been working from home the past year, I mean, that was one of the budget gaps during the pandemic, the lack of toilets being flushed downtown. So, I mean, those were all being flushed out in the, in the suburbs then, right?
Right, the, the more impact that we're having right now is the drought, because we have, uh, INI, so we were right now, we're at really low flows, we, on average, like today, if I went out there today, it'd be about thirty-five million gallons right now. Usually, we're up around forty-five, fifty for this time of day. So the drought actually is having more effect and lower the flows than, than actually the pandemic, so.
Okay.
So it's interesting.
Yeah, and that's just the, so how does the drought have, have an effect on the, on the, less irrigation?
No, the, the pipes are-
They're just dry.
Oh, all pipes are leaking, so you're not getting the rain filtering through the ground and getting, and we have rain events, and then also the combined sewer system, we're not, you know, when it starts to rain, we don't get that sewer flow down there, so it's just less flow. The river level is down, uh, so that contributes to, so now the pipes are above the river flow, so that you, you don't have that pressure of the, the pipe getting infiltration or inflow into the, into the sanitary sewer system. We're trying to alleviate that by doing a lot of, uh, lining projects. So we've done, and I have one highlighted on the WRA side, where we line to make sure that they're not leaking. You don't want that groundwater getting in and treating it, because that's unnecessary water, but you can get that INI reduced to as small number as you can, you don't have to treat that water, so that's what we try to do. So let's talk about a couple of the revenue streams. This is one of the hall waste program, that picture is actually, those, those tankers are, uh, over a big tank in the ground, that's right by our digester complex. In FY twenty, we collected about four point one million dollars. Twenty-one, right to date, uh, we haven't collected and got all the bills in yet for fiscal year twenty-one, it's about three million, and we're projecting twenty-two, two point six million, which, that's a very conservative number, we're more than likely gonna be up between the three and four million dollars, but we want to be conservative, we do that budgeting, because we never know if something could happen, and then those tankers go away for some reason, we just don't know, so we want to be conservative, we'd rather shoot low and say we're gonna get four million dollars than say we're gonna get four million and we don't, so. Um, and those trucks come from all over the state, they come from biodiesel, they come from AE dairy, they come from, uh, meat processing plants, they come from all over the state, some of them come from outside the state here, too. And they like coming here because they're very efficient, we have three lanes, they can get in, they can get out very quickly, um, and it provides a feedstock for us in our RNG process. Renewable natural gas revenue, and I'm gonna talk a little bit more about this project, it's one of our highlighted projects, but it's been online, um, since October, and for fiscal year twenty-one, we have about one point seven million dollars we generated, and we have a long-term contract coming up in this fiscal year, and just projected to generate a couple of million dollars. And like I said, I'm gonna talk about this project a little bit more detail here in a minute.
Scott?
Sorry. I look around.
I know we're selling, uh, that, uh, gas across the road, who's the-
We used to.
Yeah. Um, are we running any of our machinery with, uh, that, uh, gas at all?
No, and the reason why, Cargill's now, I don't know if you've been out there, but they're tearing down silos now, those silos are almost all tore down, but the pipe is no longer, we're not selling to them anymore, we're selling actually to a company called the Energy Authority, uh, and we're injecting renewable natural gas, which is actual natural gas quality, just the same quality as in the pipeline, we're injecting that.
Uh-huh.
Now, we did a financial analysis, it is better for us to inject all the gas we possibly can, and then buy back whatever we need, because, because of the, uh, the green environmental attributes, the, the green credits, those are where we get the most bang for our buck. If we, if we turn that in, we wouldn't get as much money, so if we did a financial analysis, it's better to inject all that, buy back what we need, because we get those financial, we get those green credits when we, when we sell it into the pipeline.
Well thought out, thank you.
So, the CIP program, um, a little bit about that, we have a debt limit of six hundred and seventy-five million dollars, that was redone, that outstanding debt. Um, our current outstanding debt is about four hundred and six million dollars. Now we have a six-year CIP of four hundred and eighteen million dollars with, uh, right currently with fifty-five point eight million for the fiscal year twenty-two. A lot of big projects, we're gonna have some of those highlighted ongoing. Uh, we do pay down that debt as we go, so we, we're planning ever to reach that six hundred and seventy-five million dollars of outstanding debt, uh, so we continue to pay those off as we go, even though we're adding more projects. And some of the, and some of the projects included there are not, uh, are, come from the, uh, the flood mitigation grant, about forty to fifty million dollars, and that's grant money that doesn't have to be, uh, don't have to issue debt on them.
So at the end of the six years, what, what's the projected outstanding debt? We're at four, six now, we have-
It's close to the six seventy-five, and I, I don't have that number in front of me, we have a projection working with PFM, our, uh, they, they've worked out a, a schedule. It maxes out, uh, a few years from now, a few years, probably about, I think in twenty-thirty, it maxes out, and then it starts going down gradually, because we have a couple of big projects that are still in, uh, and then one thing we are doing is we're, we're updating our facility plan, because we have to stay in front of the growth of the metro and everything else going on, so there's gonna be additional projects, but right now, we're gonna maintain being below that six hundred and seventy-five. I could get that information for you if I were to-
Okay, but we're gonna be, we're gonna be closer to that six seventy-five.
Yeah, it's gonna continue to go up, and then there comes a point, break point, where we start going back down.
Okay. All right, so there's, there will be a little less flexibility if there's, when, when we're close to that debt, if something comes up, but, but that'll come back, that's what you-
That you pay off the debt, yeah.
Yeah.
So on the CIP budget, these are the things that the, the CIP budget provide for, it's, like I said, ongoing growth in the WRA communities, the, as you've probably seen, the twenty-twenty census, we have some suburbs that are growing crazy. Um, you know, there's projections from, in the next fifteen to twenty years, that will be at seven hundred thousand, there's some projections that make me a little nervous that they could be at a million, depending on, on what goes on. So we can't sit back on our laurels, we gotta be out in front of all that, so, uh, that's why we're doing a, updating our facility plan to make sure we're on top of this. And then the wet weather capacity needs, um, as, you know, rain patterns change, I mean, right now, we're in a drought, next year, we might be in, uh, you know, a more rain event period or wetter period. Uh, we're proactive on the nutrient reduction strategy to keep phosphorus nitrogen out of the, the river, so we, we're proactive on that. We have a project, uh, that I will show you about that. And then we have, we're an H E facility, uh, the, the new plant was built in the mid-eighties, and it's over thirty years old, and it's starting to wear out, and we, and we are twenty-four seven operation, things are always pumping through there all hours of the day, and we have to, uh, start, uh, getting those replaced and keep, keep up with that. Then we have the consent decree and long-term control plan, which is mandated through the courts, and we have to complete those projects. And then we're also, did the flood mitigation grant program, we're flood harvesting the treatment facility with, uh, with facilities, and I have, I'll talk about that in a little bit as well.
Scott, one other question. You haven't heard anything about any of our surrounding communities wanting to take in doing their own wastewater reclamation?
No, no.
I mean, it's a huge project, I can't imagine.
We actually have people coming to us and wanting to, there's a couple, uh, I actually talked with the mayor of, uh, Almond, uh, just kind of spitballing things, and then, Van Meter might be a community that might eventually want to come on, because, so there's, there's other communities, they want to get out of the wastewater treatment business and bring it to us, so it's, uh, we'll see how that goes.
Can your facility handle, remind you?
Right now, no.
So do you have, but do you have the opportunity to expand where you're at?
Yes, yes. Uh, for now, that's gonna, that's an interesting question, because, you know, fifty years from now, we're gonna eventually, as you can see from that picture there, we're a long, narrow facility, we don't have much wood state, so eventually, we're gonna have to do something, I mean, not in my career, uh, long-term, there's gonna have to be some, some planning going on, see what, doesn't happen.
You need to help us, so.
Yeah, and so that's what this is, yeah. You have to make it down.
I know it's long, you know, there.
Yeah, it's long. This is a project that Linda's been actively involved with, Eastside Interceptor, we're glad we got through this one, Linda, uh, there's a lot of, uh, handholding and a lot of, thank you for participating and supporting us on that project, I know it was a long time coming, but it, uh, we got through it, and it's-
It did, and I, I just have to give a shout out to everybody at WRA and Nick Carter, because Nick has met with neighbors, and he is so patient and so kind and so professional.
Thank you, I pass it on, he's a good one.
He, he really is a good one.
And we had a lot of, um, interesting neighborhood meetings, I think we, they didn't always like what we had to say, but we, we, we got through it, so, and I appreciate your support. So that was a big project through, uh, went through the part of the east side, and then all the way up to Prospect Park, and we're glad that one is now over.
You know, me, too.
She'll ask me these as well. Here's a project out, the treatment plant, this is our group of little improvements, those, those triangular tanks there, um, are all going away, and we're, this is just a project, the grid is just the sand that comes through the sewer system, and it's very, uh, it deteriorates a lot of our piping and our tanks, and it's just wore out, and we're doing a new project there, about twelve and a half million dollars, and it should be completed, uh, sometime next year. This is a project that, uh, I think you guys have probably seen, when we had the pipe laying on the ground by Principal Park, there's a big black pipe that went all the way along there, we were actually lining the, the sewer there, the interceptor sewer, uh, that project is now completed, and that, basically, the new line that served gives us a whole new integrity, a whole new pipe, uh, inside there, so that one is now completed, and we have more of those to go in the coming years. This is some of the flood improvement projects that we're doing. Right now, currently, the, the box to the right of that drawing, where it says new standby power building, that's, uh, where all our electrical feeds will come in from the trans, from the, uh, substation to the north, and that's to get it up above, so we're above the flood level in case the, the levee would, uh, be breached, and then we're also doing it around some other transformers in our main pump station there in O5. We have a couple other flood projects, we're gonna raise the levee, that's part of the project with the City of Des Moines, we, the, the WRA has actually put some extra money in to raise that another foot, and then also, we have an effluent pumping, uh, improvement project, which is about twenty million dollars, and what this does is where the water is at the end of the, end of the process, instead of being fed by gravity, if the river's high, we have to pump it up over the levee to make sure we can get it out, so that's, uh, that's a project in case we ever have, uh, high flood events. So now I'm gonna talk a little bit about the renewable natural gas project, this has been a long, long project, long and coming, but it's been a very successful story for us. This is a project that takes the biogas that we used to produce, that we produce, and, treats it, and gets it to natural gas quality. And the reason it's so valuable is just not the gas itself, it's actually the renewable, the green credits that we can sell, that's what's really valuable in this, because, uh, being created from a wastewater treatment plant. Reduces our emissions and our energy consumption, and we also, it's about nineteen million dollar project, we're hoping that that pays off about four to six years. We started it up in October of twenty-twenty, and we now have a long-term agreement with Shell Energy, a ten-year agreement starting in August, uh, that will generate, like I said, about five million dollars worth of revenue a year. This is a project, this is a couple pictures, one, it shows the flame that we used to have, be burning all the time, we used to produce way more than we consumed, and that's the digester complex where the gas is actually produced. Uh, when you drive by the treatment plant, you shouldn't see that flame, only occasionally when we do maintenance where we have to shut off the, shut off the system.
How, how much do we use to flare like that?
We flare a lot, you know, it's daily, I mean, we, it's funny, we had a funny story, we, at night, we'd have people call the fire department, because if you're driving down, third, it looks like the building's on fire because it's behind the building, we'd have the fire department call us and say, hey, something's burning down here, it's not, what's this, the big flame? So, yeah, we used to flare a lot of it, because we produce so much gas, and, so now it's hardly ever on.[1757.12] ever on.
Never again.
Yeah, it's, that was dollars going out the, you know, the stack there. There's the hallways, again, that's where the feedstock enters the process, that's just dollar out. Nice photo from our drone showing the city skyline in the background, and this is internal, this is where all the pumps and compressors and all the filters that create that gas. Another project is our phosphorus recovery project. This is a project that we used to get, we get struvite in our pipes, caused from the phosphorus, magnesium, and ammonia, and it builds up inside those pipes and causes this corrosion, and we have to spend a lot of money to get that out. It's also part of the nutrient reduction strategy to remove phosphorus from our waste stream, and then this project's going to cost about twenty-seven million dollars, and it'll reduce our own M cost to remove what that material is called struvite, and we spent a lot of time and effort getting that, that out. In the process of pelletize the phosphorus, and then it can be packaged and sold, there's going to be a revenue stream, but not as much of revenue stream as the renewable natural gas, but there's a revenue stream. And as I said, this is a proactive approach to meeting the terms of the Ohio nutrient reduction strategy. And that's just a picture of kind of some of the equipment that we could possibly use. Third fire project, this is a thirteen million dollar project, those round tanks.
I think Carl had one.
Oh, Carl, did you have a question?
Yeah, you, could you just go back to your previous slide, I'm just curious a little bit more about this, so, struvite, is that...
Yeah, struvite is that material in that picture right there at the top, that's that calcified hardened material that gets inside our pipes and just keeps reducing the diameter until it restricts the flow, and part of that is made from phosphorus.
And so this could be sold back to, to farmers then?
Yeah, so it creates those, precipitates out through the process, it takes a, from a side stream, from our, the water that comes off our rotary drum thickeners and our bio, our biosalts process, when it squeezes the water out, you get a lot of water that has phosphorus and ammonia and all kinds of other nutrients in it, and this process will actually precipitates out the phosphorus into these pelletized forms, depending on what kind of process you use, you get bigger ones or smaller ones, and that becomes a fertilizer that people use, you can bag that up and sell it back to the ag or gardeners or whoever would use. Places where, we don't have a problem with the phosphorus here in our soils, but in other places, there's a lot of need for phosphorus.
All right, thank you. And do you have a sense of how our other wastewater treatment facilities in the state are in the same danger, or are we on the, tying into that?
I don't know if there's anybody else that's doing the phosphorus recovery in the state. The Chicago, Stippy Plant, Chicago, they have exactly, they have this process here, Ostera, so they've been doing it for several years now, but in the state, I don't think there's...
How is it that as part of the lawsuit, something, maybe?
I don't remember on that one, but they, because we toured that one when we were over at a conference, their facility, so, there's not a whole lot of them around, but there is some. This is a new entrance, site security, we did a study with the Homeland Security and to, with everything that's going on in the world, to make our facility more secure, we're redoing our entrance, as you can see, that's our, our main entrance is, you can see that. But anyway, the main entrance is up to the top, where you see those two roads coming in from Bendelia, that's where we come in now. It's been like that for years and years, but we're moving it down where the arc is, and having those people come in there, so if anybody comes to the gate, isn't supposed to be here, they can turn around and go out, and it's just a more secure facility. We'll have full-time gate guards, 24/7, to make sure that we don't get people coming in that shouldn't be there. And that's under design right now. This is a, this is a big project, this is the WRA East Side Other Treatment Project, takes all the flow from the east side of the conveyance system, the four-mile interceptor, the east side interceptor, puts it through this facility, can handle up to a hundred million gallons a day. What it does is it's a quick treatment for when we do have wet weather flows, high flows, so you can take the load off the main treatment plant, so we can continue to process water there. So this is an ongoing project, it's in the design phase, should be completed in fall of 2025, but it's a, it's a big project. A little bit about the consent decree and long-term control plan, this is a joint venture between the city of Des Moines and the WRA. It was submitted to the IDNR in December of 2003, it was a framework set up to determine how to reduce the number of combined sewer overflows, set forth a phased approach, so we didn't have to do everything at once, because it's very costly, costly as you will see. Like I said, it was issued in 2010, it was a consent decree that was, went through the courts, it provided for implementation of a long-term control plan, there were several things set up in there that we had to do, then it also set up a timeline and schedule for completion of a bunch of projects, taking off a bunch of the CSOs from twenty down to one, which would be at the combined sewer salt separation facility down at the treatment plant. It's very, it's been very costly, but in comparison with other communities around the Midwest, say St. Louis, they've, they've spent billions of dollars, we're at, I think the final cost projected is three hundred and, wait.
Two hundred and twenty-seven?
Three hundred and thirty-seven million dollars there, so, and I think Omaha is over a billion dollars, I think St. Louis is several billions of dollars, so I know those are bigger communities, but we've got five, you know, that's a lot of money, but for everybody else in the same boat, we've got ours fairly cheap and able to do that over time.
Scott, why is the WRA zero on a couple of these years?
Because some of those are phased projects that are projects completely exclusively helping the city of Des Moines, going up and like doing the separation projects, and that's a, that's a collection system that's owned by the city of Des Moines, and it's not owned by the WRA. The projects that are, the WRA have, are big interceptor sewers or projects that were negotiated through the 2080 agreement, like the, what's coming up is the Ingersoll Run project, that was negotiated into the 2080 agreement, but most of those wide zeros is sometimes some of those years, it was, it's basically the separation projects, all those kind of things.
Do you know that communities didn't do much work on separation?
Des Moines is the only community that has combined sewers.
That's why I was wondering. That's what I, I didn't know if some of the older cities...
And deaths.
Yeah.
Didn't have a chance to keep something.
So this is a, this is a slide that hopefully next year we can have it updated, but it shows the combined sewer system, it shows the three that are still currently active, the Twenty Second High, which will be out of service by the end of 2023, as well as Birdland, the same timeframe, Birdland Pump Station, so there's two CSOs right there, those are going to go away, and we'll, everything is going to come down to the CSSF down at the treatment plant. Right now, there's about ten square miles, and we've pretty much captured all the flow on the outskirts of that map, and we've significantly reduced the area of what the combined sewer system is by doing those separation, all the projects built like the Ingersoll Run, or the, near the West Ingersoll, and the King Irving and all those. And some of the, the one in the main, the bigger one, that's the downtown business district, and it's too costly to separate down there with all the infrastructure and all the buildings, so that one will always remain, but that's why we have the CSSF and the new main outfall and Ingersoll Run Outlet. So the Ingersoll Run Outlet, this is a new project, this is going to be very disruptive, and you're going to hear a lot about this project. This is a twenty-nine million dollar project, it eliminates the CSO at Twenty Second High, that's clear up on the red portion of that drawing, and as you can see, we're starting basically in the principal parking lot there, coming all the way down MLK. We're going to be in the north lane of MLK, we're going to have to close that lane and divert some traffic to the other side as we build that, and then we go up along right by Tech, Old Tech High, and then through the, to there. So it's going to be a very disruptive project, we've already got out in front with the Des Moines Partnership and Catch Des Moines, and talked to them about any events that they have, and I'm working with the city manager's office and the event folks there to make sure what we can do to get around, this is a Nick Carter project, so he's, we got the right guy on it.
You do.
And so there's, there's, it's going to be a big disruption, big disruption. Go ahead.
Just a question for we, are we doing some of that, I mean, I know we're doing work right by the central campus piece, this is part of our project there?
Yeah, we're partnering with Des Moines to, that whole area is reconfigured, so actually that's, all that work is going to be put on the WRA project, Des Moines will pay for it. We've been working with engineering staff here, our engineering staff and our consultant to, to get that, that new property configuration through there, so we don't want to tear that up twice, we're just going to tear it up once when we go through there.
According to all that happens.
Yeah.
Is that going to delay, is that, because that's supposed to, I thought that was going to happen next year, right?
Yeah, it's, all goes well, it should start next year, yes. And then there's some work being done at Principal Park with the levy, we've worked with them and coordinated with them to leave a section where we're coming through there, so. But we're getting out in front with a new handout to the business owners down there and the, and the public, and we're setting up several public meetings to start talking to people, get out in front of this, so when we're ready, they know who to call if there's problems, because there will be problems, things just happen. We're going through a historically significant area down there by the old Fort Des Moines, and through that whole area, we've been working with the archaeologists on that as well, so we're going to get out in front of that to make, to try to clear some of those areas before we get there, so it won't slow them down. Here's the Birdland Pump Station project that I've talked about, it, people removed one of the CSOs that's down there by Birdland Park, it's going to be a pump station, which will take the combined, or the flow and pump it to the east side interceptor. That project, it started here next year as well. So I just wanted to highlight a couple, a few of our major accomplishments in the 2020, 2021, one of course was our renewable natural gas project and startup, that's been very significant, and is long time coming, working with, trying to get an agreement through everything, and we finally had that completed, so that's been a, a big accomplishment for us. The other one is a agreement we executed with Grimes, we've been negotiating with them all the terms of their agreement to connect, and as I was commenting before, they connect on July one of 2022. On April sixth of 2021, we were actually awarded, or issued a patent for phosphorus release reactor for water treatment, and that's part of the phosphorus recovery project. This is, we have Patrick Brown out at the wastewater treatment plant, is actually a PhD in wastewater engineering, and he partnered with, we partnered with HDR, a consultant, through their observations, they discovered that we could possibly do, do it better than what was originally going to be designed, and this will reduce the size of the tankage we need for the phosphorus recovery project. This was a long time coming, it took two or three years to get through the patent, the patent process, and we were issued a patent, so it's, it's pretty neat to have our own patent, a kind of a fancy cover for, for when we get issued a patent. On May fifth, we had the first ever visit by EPA Administrator, Michael Regan, the Biden Administration came out and visited the wastewater treatment plant, and Mayor County was part of that. We also had DJ Giavenedi, Jonathan Gano, and some others from the city were there to see that. We also entertained a visit from, with him was Director Taylor Lyon from the, from the IDNR Director, and also Region Seven, Ed Chu from EPA as well. And we got to show him around, we sat down, looked at him for about thirty minutes, and showed him around some of our projects, and he was very interested in what we were doing out there, it was a nice visit. And just this June, we were, we received two awards from NACWA. One is the Gold Peak Performance Award, this is an award for complete and consistent permit compliance, we got the Gold Award for that, so that makes sure that we're meeting our permit levels and we're awarded by, and it's the National Organization of Clean Water Agencies. And then the other one that we applied for is the Golden Excellence in Management Award, that is, we set in a bunch of criteria, and it's based upon how we manage the facility and the things that we do. There's a few things we can work on, because we're going to apply again and try and get the Platinum Award. The Gold Award is only issued last year, I think, to five other agencies, so we're proud of it. As you know, I can stand up here and talk about this, but really the credit needs to go to the employees out there, what they do, they're, they're day in, day out, we have engineering staff and IT staff, O and M maintenance, those guys are the ones that come in when middle of the night, we had, just not too long ago, we had some, some power go down to our control system, they came in, troubleshoot it when it rings, they're out there, the pump station crews that was provided by the city of Des Moines as well, those guys are great as well. So I can sit up here and, and be proud of what we do, brag about what we do, but the credit needs to go to the employees, they, they do the majority of the work, not all the work, so, appreciate that. I think that's the end of my presentation. I appreciate you guys' support with the WRA, I like coming here and talking about some of the things that we've accomplished, and feel free to contact me anytime if you have any questions, concerns, or anything about the WRA.
I just have a, I have a couple of comments. Number one, those are all city of Des Moines employees that are working there, so I think that's important to give, give credit, and I thank you, because I know that that group of, of employees, as are all of our employees, but they are very dedicated. I did take a tour there a few years ago when I was first elected, and it was a great tour, I think there was some, maybe some other council members there, but it might be time, if you've not toured the WRA facility, I would certainly be interested in another tour, so...
Absolutely, Linda.
If anybody, I mean, it's, it's fascinating, or will you let us do that?
Um, right now, it's probably not the best, because it's, because we have so many construction projects, you can't, we can't get you to see everything you need to see.
Okay.
So we're probably maybe a year out before we get some of those projects buttoned up, because I'd like to show you like the, the main pump station right now, we have that all tore up around there, because we're doing the flood hardening project, and the grid project will be done at that time. You just get to see more if you, if you wait, you're welcome to come out anytime you want, but...
It was a fascinating tour, and the, the one thing that impressed me most is the water that we are putting back into the Des Moines River is as clean as can be.
Yeah.
It is safe, clean water, and I oftentimes, times get questions from constituents and say, can we take that clean water from the WRA and give it to Des Moines Water Works? And, you know, I, it is, it's just very clean water, that's, that's how clean it is.
Yeah, Linda, I do have one comment to make. I was on that, on a tour different with another council member.
Okay.
And, and, you know, Scott went through the three or four stages of filtering, and it starts almost jet black and gets to clear, and then the other council member made the comment, can we drink that water? And I saw a terrified look on Scott's face, and so I just tried to tell the other council member, I said, the only difference between that water and a bowling ball is you could drink the bowling ball if you absolutely had to.
Then you don't, you can't drink the water that comes out of there, it still needs to go through another process for water treatment, but it...
But it's so clean.
It is clean.
We're, we're good for the environment.
Yes.
The water that we put back into the river is healthy and clean water.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Scott?
Just a, just a quick statement, you know, I've been able to serve on your board for, I believe, three years, and the professionalism that you and your staff, and have all the communities together, and the way you conduct the meetings, and the partnership that we have, should, should be looked at in other, in other ways that we do things in our region. So hats off to you and your board, and all of us that participate, but especially you and your leadership, so we thank you, Scott, for what you do.
Thanks, Jill, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Like I said, thank you.
Well, this is an opportunity to really actually get more input from the council on preferences and narrow the conversations somewhat in what our opportunities are, and going through the, the information provided by legal, there was research done on other communities that you'll see noted in there, obviously going outside of the state of Iowa, knowing that it's more of an issue with urban areas, and so there's some examples from Omaha and some other larger communities in the Midwest, as I look for my notes, and may have inadvertently been left downstairs.
I've got a copy of what was sent to us.
Oh, I got it. Thank you. Okay. So the council had asked for another conversation on the private property tow, and so to start with, I want to make sure everyone understands, this is not dealing with our city contracts. We have contracts both with our lease department for when maybe a vehicle accident occurs and we need the vehicles towed, that is through a city procurement process, as well as community development utilizes towing for removal of vehicles, junk vehicles, things of that nature that need to be removed. Those are a different topic from what this was requested, this is private property, this is a question about when residents envis... This is a question about when residents and visitors come to our community and maybe parking in a private parking lot or space that's private property, and may have mistakenly parked there for whatever reason, find themselves being towed. And so the question has arisen, what, what if anything could the city do to try and regulate that type of activity? And so I'm going to lean pretty heavily on the advice and great research that has been put together by Legal Department that will narrowly give you some, some opportunity to think about policies that do not interfere with what state law already is and allows for. And so fairly quickly here, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff, but, but what we've got is a situation where, and correct me if I'm wrong, the state law allows for a designation of a vehicle to be considered abandoned upon a 24-hour time clock that actually does not require additional signage to indicate that on a private property situation. And so there are different kinds of preemption analysis that would need to be done to see if the city can even come in with its own laws, as long as they don't conflict with the existing state laws. There's a couple of different approaches to that, and we can get into that if necessary. But the key here is we can't do anything that is contrary to what's already state law in that 24-hour. So it looks like a narrow opportunity for the city to do something inside of that 24-hour period that would potentially, and my guidance or recommendation, allow for something along the signage, dealing with the signage that, that would give more indication that, that there's a potential for, due to city code, a private towing situation that's well-known and well-signed. That would be the one opportunity that is cleanest for the city, if you desire to add more to it.
It, I mean, I think there's at least one other opportunity, because we're talking about, the state, the state statute only deals with abandoned vehicles, and it designates something as an abandoned vehicle after 24 hours. So we can't, arguably, we're preempted from doing anything after that 24-hour period. But, for example, if someone goes out, you know, they parked there an hour ago, they're in a building next door, someone tells them, hey, I think your car's being towed, they go out there at that time, that's clearly not an abandoned vehicle, it's not 24 hours, the resident is right there. I mean, I'd like to address the signage issue, but I'd also like to address those instances where the resident shows up, or whoever it is shows up, and the tow, the towing company is there, and their car might already be on the vehicle, but I'd like them to maybe be able to get their vehicle back without having to go to a tow lot and without having to incur that burden. And I think that is within, at least as I read the legal, the legal opinion, because that, there's no way that that would fit the abandoned vehicle under the statute.
Yeah, the only, the only concern there, Josh, and we can certainly draft something up to try to address it, but the concern there would be that under 364.1 of the code, we're prohibited from regulating the civil relationship between parties. And so if you park somewhere that you don't have permission to park, and someone wants to tow you, we've got multiple civil relationships that are there. So I could see at least an argument that we're already preempted from, from regulating based on, on the private property. I, we feel real strongly that we've got a lot more power on public property and on public right-of-way to regulate towing. But when you get into private property, and you've got people that are on other people's private property, that's probably going to, there's at least an argument that that's a civil relationship. And 364.1 says cities, part of the rule in Iowa is not regulating civil relationships. So that's going to be the concern there.
Well, but under the abandoned vehicle statute, I mean, to tow outside of that, they would have to go to the police then, right? I mean, they're violating the law, and, and, under.
For them not to have any kind of concern about liability, I think that's fair statement. But the, and that's, that's the point of the 24 hours, is to reduce the private property owner's liability. But arguably, especially if you have signage and given somebody notice, I think it's, it's going to be pretty tough to say that somehow when the signage is there and then there's a tow that takes place, that, that the private property owner doesn't have a right to regulate their property.
Absolutely. I don't think we're, we're talking about the regulation piece.
Okay.
The question, my, my question is, is there a fairness in terms of the practice that someone gets out there, I mean, yes, they violated it, but can we provide some protection if, for, for them not to have to go all the way to a tow lot?
My, my question, oh, let's move it.
I just have a question about the state law.
Yes, Carl, I mean.
About private property. I just, I have a real quick question. So if I have a private lot and someone leaves their car there, and I know that it's, you know, it's left there, I mean, I can, I can call and have it towed right now, or does that, does that violate the state law?
No. No, I mean, the, the state law provides you with a protection that vehicles that are there more than 24 hours are considered abandoned.
I wonder if it's not there 24 hours.
And if it's not there 24 hours, then you get into a balancing test and have potentially someone who says, well gee, I ate at the restaurant, and then I just went to walk around the block, you know, to, to use your, your particular business as an example, I ate at a restaurant, I walked around the block, came back, my car's gone, it wasn't abandoned.
Got you.
So that, that's the issue. But I, I think, you know, private property owner, it's, it's whether or not you have the confidence, you know, that, boy, we need the, we need the space and that vehicle, nobody's here.
Well, not necessarily just my private business, but as I, you know, as I have other properties in downtown Des Moines that are ran by, you know, we'll say for instance, NAP Company, that, that operates a lot of property management throughout the, the city. And there's clearly signage there, and if someone parks there and they're not, you know, let's say they, they park in the lot just south of Wells Fargo Arena, and they're going up to watch a basketball game, and it says clearly, you cannot park here, this is for the employees, for the third floor, and someone just parks their car there and gets out, and everyone knows that they're going up to Wells Fargo, and they're not an employee there. They still have to wait 24 hours to tow that vehicle?
No, that, that, that's, the, the difference there, if you're talking about the state law that doesn't address that.
Okay.
Versus the city code, the.
Well, that's what I was a little confused, that's what I was a little confused, because the state law, you were saying, is 24 hours.
State law is 24 hours on an abandoned vehicle. And the, the difference there is, we couldn't, for example, say, the, the city council couldn't, for example, say, no tow's for 48 hours, because the state statute says, after 24 hours, abandoned vehicle, the property owner can tow it. So then we'd be prohibiting something that the legislature has authorized, so that, that we can't.
So I, I guess, why, why are we even talking about this? What, what does this have to do with, I mean, what, what does it have to do with us? The laws are already in place. Are we, are we, are we going to say that we're going to create a law for private property owners? Is that, is that why we're having this discussion? Is that, is that why we're, is that why we're having?
Yep. And Joe, let me, Carl.
Sorry, I just didn't, I didn't, I didn't know why we're even talking about this.
Yeah, well, I think what, what Josh was asking about is if, if, if a car is on the, I don't know if that's called a flatbed or whatever, and someone says, A, B, got it towed me, well, the driver may not be able to accept payment. I mean, they did something, you know, I mean, that's like half a tow or whatever. And so if the driver is unable to do a credit card transaction, it goes back to the yard, so.
So are we just, are we talking about this?
Is that what you're asking, Josh?
So people that put their car.
Well, there, there are two pieces. One, it is, is I think we have the ability to ensure that if there is going to be patrolling for that immediate violation, that we can require signage to be posted. I think a lot of folks already have that signage posted, but I think there's some that, at least as it's been reported, there is not signage that, that is clear for places where there is towing. And that leads to people who, who come and have a bad experience, because they park somewhere, they don't think it's a problem to park there, because they don't see any, you know, no parking violators will be towed, because that's what they're looking for, like no parking.
Or they're not looking for anything. Go ahead.
Some are not looking for anything, right? They don't care, but I think the people who have the bad experience and the ones who write and are, are looking for the signage. And I think it's reasonable to require signage if it's going to be patrolled, if there's someone driving around and is going to pull that out of a lot. Like, that's, that's step one, that we want to talk signage, and I think that piece is pretty clear-cut that we can do that. Step two is trying, I think we should be trying to figure out, because I've heard from a number of folks who thought, thought that they could park where they did, and then they're at a bar or restaurant nearby, and someone tells them, hey, I think your car's being towed. They go out there, their car is on the flatbed, they want to get it back, so they don't have to drive six miles or figure out how to go six miles, because they don't have their vehicle now. Get to that tow lot and pay the fee. I want to figure out if there's a way or anything that we can do to help folks in that limited circumstances, where they come out, their vehicle is right there, let's, let's help them out in that circumstance. Those are the two things that I think this discussion is about.
Okay.
Well, for me, this is, this is about, impinging on personal property rights. If I own a building and I have parking there, you do not have the right to park there unless you are inside that building or have permission. I don't know why we would spend any time worrying about personal property rights. Don't park there. Don't, don't just assume that you can go and park wherever you want. I think most of us are reasonable and know that when I go to Wells Fargo Arena, I need to park at Wells Fargo or find a place on the street, you know, or someplace. I don't just assume it's like, oh, well, there's a parking space, I can park there. I don't know why we would put the burden on a private property owner to have to sign something, you know? I remember when we were on Board of Adjustmentville, we had landowners that would come in, you know, and people park in their lots and they'd leave trash and garbage, and every single day they had to go out and clean up the garbage because the people made a prob, you know, left their garbage there. I can tell you that I have been involved with Logan Park Apartments, which is a HUD property, and those folks, when I sit down and visit with them, they get, the, the ladies that are there, generally they're elderly or disabled, they are afraid to go, they were afraid to go out into their parking lot, because people were coming in there, they were doing things that they should not have been doing, they had no business being there, they didn't live in the apartment, but it was just a convenient place to come and make their drug deal or do whatever things they were going to do. They were harassing the residents who live there, and through the multi-crime program with the police, they have a private towing contractor that comes in and patrols that, or if there's an issue, the residents can call, and they will come and tow that car. That is their right. That is, that is that property owner who manages that property, it's their right to have that tow company there. And it doesn't matter whether it's signed or not, if you're not doing business there, you shouldn't be there. And I'm not going to support anything that would infringe on, on personal property rights. I've said that before, I'm very, very adamant that we try to impede on personal property rights, and we need to stay out of it. We can deal with anything in the city that's on public right-of-way, but personal property rights, we need to stay away from.
So looking for a consensus on the first signage question now.
What, what type of signage are you, I mean, like, do we have, we already have a signing, I think, I think Bill, Bill can talk about the signing, signs ordinance that we, we took on seven years ago that, you know, has changed all of ours. So are we asking to put like a four-by-four sign up that says your car's going to be violated, or what?
Just the traditional signage, right, that you see.
I think it's already up in, in places that are getting towed.
To make it clear, so people, especially in the downtown area where it's very confusing and where, you know, everybody's looking for space anyway, so.
Well, everyone's looking for space, but they don't have to pay for it. That is the problem that we're all talking about. So people are looking for space that they're not paying at the meters, okay? Because we have plenty of parking in the garages and at the meters downtown, but people don't want to pay for the meters or parking. They figure, oh, I'm just going to run in here, I'm going to park here real quick, and you know what? Hopefully nobody sees me, and hopefully I'm not in anyone's spot. And then when they get caught, and then it's like, oh my gosh, why are you towing my car? Well, because you didn't follow the rules, just like other rules that we have in place, and there's consequences for those rules. And, you know, if, you know, I think there's a policy, Josh, that if you go out and your car's on the, on the, on the truck, I believe you can pay half the fee and they'll drop your car right there. I believe, I'm not sure, but I think that that's a possibility. And I think that's fair, because they've already got it hooked up, they've already got the thing up on the thing, so he's working, you know, that whoever's towing it, whether it be Groto, or whether it be GNS, or whether it be all these other towing companies, that these private property owners are paying, they're calling to get their cars out of the, their lots, so people that are paying rent and are their customers can park there. I, I think the policy, there is something that where you can get your car dropped, but you're going to have to pay something. You don't get it for free. There is consequences.
I'm okay with, I'm okay with having to pay something, right? Like, that, that's reasonable. It, it's a question, and this is where, I don't know that we can get into how much from what I hear from, from our city attorney, but, but I think that they should be able to get their vehicle back.
We all know someone.
Well, I think, I think it's, I think it's fair, that, you know, you, you know, if you're, if you're able to, and I don't, I don't know, you know, Randy's here, maybe we can ask him. I don't know.
Yeah, would it not be a good idea? We didn't want to spend a lot of time if there wasn't going to be a support for looking into this.
Typically don't.
We could, we could research by asking the four or five major towing, what their customer service level is.
Right.
In response to, they have possession of the vehicle, but it's still on site, what they would do in that situation, because there may be an opportunity to ask but not regulate a nominal fee that, that is known.
Why even ask? We can't regulate it. Nor would we want to.
Well, I think from a customer standpoint.
From a customer standpoint.
I think that that's, that's, that's a fair, fair question to ask. But, I mean, you're right, we're not going to be able to regulate it, but I believe the policy's already in place, that it's, you, you get a fee reduction if, if, if you're out there, then, okay.
There's also, if it's not even hooked up yet, and you're having to argue whether to take the car or not, it's not even on it, so I think there's some instances that we've heard about that we have.
And the processing is a very real concern, too. Can they even process a payment, so.
Other swipe cards, everything.
If there is interest in that respect, we can do that research with the major.
And I think one of the larger towing companies, I think, you know, since this all came up, I've had a conversation with Randy, they're all going to be wearing body cams, so all the people that are saying, oh, So all the people that are saying, oh, yeah, they did this, they did this, well, now we're gonna see who's saying what, what's gonna happen.
I think this also could have a swipe, you know, a swipe card there so you can take care of people and get them without taking clear, as you said, because if you get your car towed, then what do you do?
Nobody's happy when you get a car towed.
So I'm just saying, I'm not saying you don't pay something, but.
Don't, don't park where you shouldn't be. It's simple.
Nobody's happy when they get their car towed.
I absolutely get it, but I've heard some instances where they were, you know, that, and that's where the signage is important to me. Like, if, if we, if we.
So I'm hearing there's a consensus to take the next step. Well, we've got to be very careful because come January, when those folks up at the Golden Dome start back in session, they're immediately gonna, you know, this is another instance where we've overstepped our local control and then we'll slap our hands and then we want nothing. So it's best to work with our providers.
There is nothing right now.
I don't think we, no, there is.
And there's a reason why there's nothing because obviously they've created a law there so there's nothing. So, but if we can work with maybe the folks that are doing the towing and have a somewhat of an agreement with them and say, can we do this, can we not do that? Because I believe that, you know, as far as customer service that we want to provide our residents, then I think that that.
And visitors.
And visitors, residents, the folks that are in our city, that I think that there's a potential that we can have a conversation, not strong arm conversation, but a conversation to say, hey, how can we all do it better? Because that's, I think that's your objective, that we want to do it better. And I think that we can, there's a possibility that we can do it better, but if we, you know, strong arm create some ordinance or policy, I don't think that's gonna go well for any of us. And let's, let's, let's try to take the, the, you know, the gentleman's approach and sit down at a table and talk to, talk to, you know, folks that we have a relationship with, you know, they work for the city all right, already. And I think the majority of the complaints that you probably received is from one towing company, right? He's sitting right here, I think he would be more willing to sit down with a few of us and say, this is how I do it, this is what we do, this is why I do it. So let's, let's take that approach, Scott. Can we do that? Can we set up a small group of us and do that?
Yeah, it actually could, it could actually address both issues.
Right.
Because the, the signage is linked to the ones that are actually enforcing, right?
Yes.
And those ones that are enforcing probably have arrangements with one of our vendors. So we, if you want, staff could approach the major vendors and just ask about the potential that if they, if they have a new contract with a private property, the question could be asked, is there signage?
Well, we've all gotten emails from, I was like, why am I getting all these emails about towing? The towing contracts, I don't even know what the hell's going on. Because it's not with us. Right? And I'm like, what are you guys talking about? And then I've got phone calls from these property managers that are running properties downtown, like, what are you guys doing? We need this, we need to be able to take care of our property owners.
And I think you've called them.
No, I didn't call anybody, Josh.
I didn't call anybody.
I didn't call one single person.
Okay, so we know the directions so we can?
Well.
Zero.
Okay.
I didn't call anybody.
We've had a request, do we want to hear from one of the towing contractors that's here to maybe answer, would you rather not?
I would tell you that we're gonna need to talk to three or four majors. So it's up to you if you want to, but you know, I think like getting input from one.
We'll sit down with, with the.
I think it would be better to do it collectively so we can get a consensus. Because some people might do something different, so they'll let staff do that.
Let staff do it. I'm sorry, Carl has a question.
Yeah, so, so I live in the East Village and I've had friends complain about being towed in the East Village. And I walked over to the lots and the signs are there. I, I've not found a lot that there's not signs in. Now, is there a sign in front of every?
Stall.
Stall, no. But, uh, you know, I don't know what the, they're not really hidden signs, I didn't feel, so I said, oh, I'm sorry, you got towed. I think one thing, if we do get together and talk with some of the, the private towing companies, just, um, you know, what are the hours that you can go and get your vehicle? So someone leaves a bar at 2:00 AM and they would probably like to get their car at 2:00 AM, but, but.
They probably shouldn't drive.
They lost their way.
Point, well taken. Someone else can go help get their car. But anyway, so, um, it's the, the hours that are available to get their vehicle and, um, is there like a minimum? So you get the car towed to a lot and, you know, there's, some people think, well, it was only there an hour. Well, it is an hour a day, you know, so, um.
Okay.
Still costs money.
But it still costs money to get it there. And so, um, just like, um, you know, renting, renting a vehicle, if you're, you know, into the third day, you're gonna get charged a third day, so.
If I go to a hotel and I check in at 3:00 in the afternoon and I have to be out by 10:00 in the morning, that's, it's not a whole day, but I have to pay for the day.
Yeah, so, um, anyway, I, I've not seen a lack of signage in the East Village.
No. And we have a parking garage right across the street here that there's probably four floors that are empty. So there's plenty of parking and we're gonna have another parking garage.
We have a brand new parking lot.
We need to get that thing figured out because I know where that workforce, Nelson's parked. Yeah, I don't know what's going on, are we not able to use that parking garage?
One floor is open.
Okay. Because I, I believe that's where I get a lot of complaints of cars getting towed out of that lot.
Parking lot, yeah.
Across the street from, from Zombie Bar and E C Hotel.
No, it's just the actual flat lot.
Yeah, the flat lot. And that's a private lot. And so people are, are parking there and they're getting towed. And so we have a parking garage, so I don't know if we need to talk to Nelson, I don't, I don't know if there's additional parking maybe in that garage that we can put some additional signage up and says, you know, this, this is where you need to park, you know, there's, there's this garage, there's a garage on 16th Grand, then we have another garage, but it's, I mean, their, their garages plus all the street parking in the East Village.
You have to walk two blocks.
You do have to walk.
There's a city app that you can use to find out where the lots are. I mean, it's there.
Well, we're gonna have different parking meters to where, you know, it'll be a little bit easier to pay for the parking meters because you'll be able to have a phone app in the next year, hopefully, in, in certain areas to where you'll be able to extend and you'll be able to do things like that and hopefully find parking spots with that, with that app, I hope. I don't know. It will make things much, much easier. So, um, we'll, we'll see how that goes.
If there are no other questions, I think Scott has his direction, we can move on. Who's been, who's presenting?
Yep, Lisa Krabs with Neighborhood Services.
Thank you, Lisa.
And I'll have a couple others. Ready for me to get started?
Yes, ma'am, please do.
Okay, great, thank you. Like I said, I'm Lisa Krabs, I'm the Federal Funds Administrator, work with the Neighborhood Services Department. So a while back, probably late last year, a few staff decided that it'd probably be a good idea since there's so much COVID response funding coming through that we give you a quarterly update with a focus on a program. So that's why we're here today. Last quarter, we focused on the economic development programs, so the Small Business Relief and Dine Out Des Moines. And so today, we're gonna focus on housing. So like I said, I'm Lisa. And then also I'll have Pam Carmichael from Homey talking a little bit, too, and Anne Bacon from Impact Community Action. So they're really kind of two of our major partners that have been actually on the ground floor working and helping our families facilitate these programs. And just an introduction to how we're, how we're gonna do this presentation, I'll touch on a couple slides that we had in the last quarterly work session, just to kind of reorient all of us as to why we're here. So covering the programs at a high level, the timeline at a high level, financial information, and then again, the focus on housing, when I'll hand it off to Pam and Anne, so. So the programs, as I mentioned a couple times already, the last work session, we covered Small Business Relief, Dine Out Des Moines. Today, we're covering rental assistance and mortgage relief as well as, I'll touch on homelessness programs, and that's technically where the homelessness prevention comes in that Pam will talk about, but really just housing in general. And then earlier this year, we also allocated funds to mental health and childcare. And last year, there was the Emergency Food Distribution Program as well, that served over 50,000 meals. So those bottom three, we won't really touch on today, just like I said, the top right This is the timeline, I'm not gonna hit every single date on here, but it's more just to show that there's been a lot coming through. So we've had three rounds of community development block grant funds, which is kind of that widest scope of funding that allows us to do the mental health, the childcare, the food programs, as well as some housing. And then we've had two rounds of Emergency Solutions Grant, which is really the focus on homelessness. We've had two rounds of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, and that's through the Treasury, and that is separate from, I know there's additional Treasury funds for things like infrastructure that City Manager's Office is handling. So that's, that's a little bit separate, but we've had two rounds for the Treasury Emergency Rental Assistance Program. And then finally, with the American Rescue Plan, we've also been allocated a separate home fund. And so home funds are gonna be kind of similar to our Emergency Solutions Grant in that it's really housing related for homelessness type or at-risk homeless programs. And that's the only program of this whole timeline of all the different groups that we've been allocated and funding rounds, really the home funds are the only ones that we haven't clearly set aside a plan for. So I think, you know, in terms of progress and efficiency, we're doing pretty good.
So are you saying we haven't allocated any of those home funds?
The home funds, no.
Then how much is that?
Uh, 3 million, I believe.
And how long do we have to allocate that?
I wanna say 2030.
Okay.
That one has a really long timeline.
Okay.
Yeah. We, we did a preliminary commitment, you might remember with the Anowim Project.
Yeah.
So that's, but that's not a funding commitment, you know, we don't have an amount, we don't have the underwriting done, just saying that we'd like to use it for that, so.
So the home funds are traditionally capital focused.
Yeah.
To, to increase units. So we have a longer horizon, much longer horizon to spend those funds, whereas a lot of the other programs we'll hear about are true rental assistance that need to get out there quickly.
I thought we allocated some funds for the, for the hotel on Roway.
Yes, that was the Anowim.
That's the Anowim?
The Anowim Project, and that was just like a preliminary.
We do approve it or was that more agreed that a big project?
Yeah, yeah, we agreed.
But we haven't agreed on the dollar amount.
Exactly. And we haven't signed an agreement.
Okay, that's why I was a little confused, I thought we'd used some funds.
Yeah, yeah, we've kind of, we've said that we're interested and we'd like to, and we plan to, it's just that there's a whole set of details we don't have to do the official agreement.
Okay.
I think they were going after some additional funds, too, and they needed us to be supportive.
Yep, exactly.
Okay.
Okay. So this slide here covers kind of the financial information. If you remember the pie chart from last time, the main difference here is that we just have a bigger slice on our left chart for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program through the Treasury, again, separate from any infrastructure, City Manager's Office funding that we're talking about in a different time. This is specifically Emergency Rental Assistance. So you'll see that's the biggest portion, it's about 46%. And then our next largest funding source was the CDPG, and again, that's that wide scope of programs we can use it for. If you look at the right pie chart, this is just a breakdown of how we've used or allocated the funds. And this does include the home funds because we have to use it for housing. But what you'll see is we've really dedicated a significant portion, almost 70%, just to housing assistance.
And have we used all of those funds for housing assistance? Have we used all 14 million?
No, we have not used it all. Where we're at, we've used about, well, we've obligated about 75% of the CDPG. We've used about 50%, a little over 50% of the ESG, a little over 50% of the Emergency Rental Assistance through the Treasury, so.
And how long do we have to use the, the additional funds that we have, the other 50% and 25%? Is that over a period of how many more years?
Yeah, the CDPG we have until, I wanna say 2026.
Okay.
And then the ESG we have until September of 2022.
Well, what about the ER?
The ER, that's broken into two sections, and so the, the first round, I believe, is 2022 as well. And Anne, you might have to correct me on that one.
January of 2022?
It's spent.
It's already spent.
Well, yeah.
First. Yeah.
The second round.
Second round.
Second round.
Until 2025.
There you go.
How much is that?
It's another 5 million.
Okay, it's another 5 million.
Yeah.
Okay, so the 11.
The 11 includes the 6 of 5 million from the two rounds.
Right. So we don't have to worry about it.
That's.
We're getting it in people's hands that need it, so I guess it's the question that I want to get to, unlike others that haven't done probably the best job of doing that.
And maybe this will come later, but I have some questions about who's getting them.
Yes, yes. So I'm focusing on kind of the higher level. Anne and Pam will have lots of details about who.
Okay.
So what we have here, this is just kind of, I'll call this like a traditional affordable housing spectrum, okay? So the thing to note here is I'm gonna go through some numbers and then I'll summarize those numbers so it's a little easier to absorb. But what this is, this busy graphic, is kind of the traditional, when we talk about affordable housing programs, the realms and the sections in which they occur. But again, with this emergency funding, one thing to note is this spectrum is getting really blurry and the people who were assisting may have actually at one point been a homeownership unit at this 80% AMI, but now they're at 0%. So take it with a grain of salt, I'm just a visual to kind of understand the concepts, but again, with emergency situation, it could be all over the place. So what, what it's showing here is that our traditional homelessness or at-risk programs or at-risk of homelessness programs fall at the lowest level of the income scale, which makes sense. And so for a family of three right now, it's about $25,000 or less, is kind of what that 30% threshold means. And within that group, we've assisted 238 households with homelessness prevention, 37 households with rapid rehousing, over 2,000 households with emergency shelter, and that includes the motel and hotel vouchers. And then also, just to, just to kick this in there, the Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency has received 120 emergency vouchers. So I won't really cover that today, but that's, you know, also to give you a sense of where that falls. And moving forward, the traditional kind of rental scale that we look at is below 60% of the area median income, and that's falling about less than $50,000 per year for a three-person household. And with that, that's gonna be mostly our Emergency Rental Assistance Program with the Treasury funds. That's about 3,200 households assisted as of June 30th, excuse me. And then finally, kind of our homeownership bracket, we've assisted 66 households. So also, the rental assistance bracket includes contract rent, rent arrears, utilities, utility arrears, and deposits, so it's kind of a bigger, a bigger definition than just rent, but.
Say that for me again?
Utilities, too, right?
Utilities.
Deposits.
Deposits, rent arrears, and contract rent.
Okay.
Yeah.
So does part of this go directly to the hands of the property owner again?
Yep. Yep. We actually, I don't think any of our programs pay the renter or tenant or household directly. It's all, it goes straight to the property owner, manager.
So I'm a little bit fuzzy on this. There was an article in the Register in the last four days about how statewide the dollars are not getting back to the, um, residents, but we're doing well in Polk County. So that was my takeaway from that.
But there's still dollars available. There's still dollars available to come, I believe, this way.
Right, but.
And confirmed.
Statewide, the, the dollars are not getting out to the individuals, but in Polk County, it's a different story, is that?
Yeah, and maybe that's a misrepresentation when you say getting to the individuals, getting to the properties on behalf of individuals.
Yes, to the property owners that, 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 you know, they need, you know, they have loans to pay, you know, so they.
Yes, and I think Anne probably can speak to that a little bit more when it comes to her section. That is probably the difference, so, here I can go to the next slide, actually. When we talk about these numbers, there's, there's the City of Des Moines allocation that came from the government, right? The federal government. So we have the Treasury funds, the HUD funds. And these are the numbers we've served in total. We've served 5,000 total households so far, 9,000 individuals, of which 3,300 are more than a third of children. But what's not shown here is that in addition to these numbers, we do have funds that can flow from the Iowa Finance Authority or the state, Polk County, and then some other programs, like Polk County has a trust fund, has a program at the Justice Center. So really, these numbers are just Des Moines residents, not duplicated. But I would conservatively estimate another 20% higher than this would be other people served by other programs. And so that's where the state has funding. And I think that's what kind of we're alluding to is that there is statewide funding, and it's maybe not getting out as fast as the programs that we're administering locally. But we are taking advantage of other programs as well.
I promise I'll tell you a lot about that.
Okay. So with that transition, I will hand it off to Pam, the Executive Director of Home Inc., and to talk about the homelessness prevention program.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to take just a minute, if I could, introduce a couple people. Jan Zalecki has been running our homeless prevention program. She's in charge of our counseling services. She was here a whole three months before she jumped into the fire. She's done an excellent job. And then Tony Montgomery is the new Executive Director of Home Incorporated. I think most people know that I'm getting ready to retire probably around September, so I just wanted you to know. And hopefully, we'll be able to introduce him to all of you. But I want to thank you for the opportunity today to talk about this program. I do have to tell you that we are using only the emergency solutions grant money. That's the money that followed from HUD down. Usually, this would be money that would be, go through the COC, Continuum of Care. In fact, it did go through them, and then they had to find a vendor for it. We have both IFA money from the state or Polk County and the City of Des Moines money. They were very, I would say, equal, very similar in amounts. We have a total of about $2.16 million. Over two rounds, we got first one in September. Second one came, I want to say, in about January. We applied for the second one. And those funds, the IFA funds, could be used anywhere. We started off first with the IFA funds because those are the funds that we had. And then the City of Des Moines funds were used primarily for the City of Des Moines. But I do need to let you know that even of the IFA funds that we used, a good portion, I would say probably more than 60% of those funds were spent in the City of Des Moines because that's where we have been seeing the greatest need. We tried to respond very quickly to this. We do ESG. We have a history of working with emergency shelter grant program funding. It is not one of the easiest programs to administer. There is a lot of data that needs to be collected, different systems that we need to use. We decided we would do this because, to be quite honest at the time, nobody else would. There are other organizations that would usually use these funds, simply said, we don't have the capacity. We actually didn't have the capacity, but tried to gear up as quickly as we could. We also have both experience with landlords and tenants. We found that to be very important to the work that we were doing in homeless prevention. Not only contacting landlords and making sure that the landlords knew that if their tenants were behind, they could come to us and we could assist them. And also, a lot of tenants already knew who we were. So those were the pieces, the successes that we think we had. We had, I think what was the hardest thing to deal with is just the sheer number of calls. On an average month, Home Inc. will get 200 calls for housing counseling line. When we were doing COVID, it was 500. So that just tells you the sheer volume. And I can't imagine, Anne had more money, I can't imagine the calls that they received. But the challenges were to try to gear up quickly, which we were able to do. We had limited staffing, and then there's also the administrative rules. We had to try to bind the two programs together to be able to make sure. And we're fortunate in that they were fairly similar before, between the city. What we were using as far as regulations on who was eligible and that type of thing was similar between the two entities, IFA and the city. The administration of that was a little different. We had issues with, I think, first off, trying to figure out how we're going to deal with all the people that came through. Because we counseled everyone that came, that walked through, that called us, because we did all of this virtually. At the time that we took over the money, our office was closed. Our office just opened last week. And so we were working remotely from home during this entire time. We found, I think, some of the aha moments for me in regard to this is we had people calling us that had never asked for assistance ever. And were just, you know, they were really out of their depth. They didn't know the human service system. They did not know anything about these. They, you know, when you start asking people for some of this information, if they're not in the system already, it becomes burdensome. And they really don't want to give out a lot of their personal information. But in the end, they're going to have to do it to be able to get these funds. I think that this had a very disproportionate impact on minority households, disabled households, and single-family households. We have spent thus far, we have about $250,000 of the City of Des Moines money left. And those funds, we will use over the next six months. But I feel confident that by the end of December, those funds will be gone, that we will have expended all of the funds that the city has given us. We spent, we did have a grant that we're still overseeing that came through IFA. IFA had two chunks of money. One was for homeless prevention. The other was for supportive housing. So we are actually, the organization that ended up writing the grant, which is Home Inc., we will also administer their funds for at least another year because they'll be able to use their funds probably up until July 30th of 2022. So we'll be working with them. The takeaways I want the council to know is that there are agencies that are willing to use the federal funds. But the administration in funding between like an IFA and a city are different. When the federal funds flow through the process to organizations such as the city or IFA, they make their own, they do their own administrative rules almost. I think that going forward in the future, it would behoove everyone if we tried to get a little bit on the same page, not only for the nonprofits, but also for the clients at certain points. The paperwork is different. The method of reimbursement is different, all of that type of thing. I remember the first week that we received money, we had to put, it was over $80,000, the first round of checks we have. We had to, as a part of this, also keep in mind that these are reimbursable, okay? We do not get the money upfront. So Home Inc. worked with the Community Foundation, and we were very fortunate to get a half a million dollar zero, no cash flow loan with no interest because somebody at the Community Foundation agreed to pay that on Home Inc.'s behalf. But without those funds, we would have never been able to administer these funds. Because with the budget that we have, to send out checks every week of over $80,000 and to wait for a month to be reimbursed is just not possible. I'm very pleased that the second round that the city advanced us the funds. So we have not had that problem during the second half of the year. And we've also been able to pay back our revolving loan that we took out from the Community Foundation. When you were talking about the article in the newspaper, I think that we, as a community, should do everything that we possibly can to advocate to IFA that those funds need to stay here, and they need to stay here for housing. Because the clients that we are seeing, this is not over. Just because people are going back to work and just because, you know, the world's starting to turn again, we don't have to wear masks, these are the people that we've been serving for years and years. I mean, they're not, some of them are new clients. They've never experienced anything like this. But you always have the people that are already spending more than 50% of their income on rent and their ability to be able to stay in those units. I don't know what landlords are going to really do if, once evictions start, where people are going to go. This will just mean that we will possibly spend more time in the shelter. I'm happy to hear that Anne is probably going to get more money for this because it's going to be needed. Simply because of money, you know, they may not be able to get it out in other parts of Iowa. But any advocacy that can be done with the governor and with IFA to make sure that the urban areas are able to have some of this money would be helpful because we are going to need it. We're going to see an increase in doubling up. And, you know, one of the things is, you know, a lot of people had to leave a job simply because of childcare. There was no childcare. They could have continued to work, but there was not an avenue for them to work. That is still going to be an issue until school starts again. So if you have any difficult questions, I can bring up, I can ask Jan. But I appreciate the city's response in this. And you are always good to work with. I mean, any issues that we may have, you try to work through the best you can with what you're given. So I really appreciate it. And I know within this community that we have saved hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands, of families that I don't know where they would have gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
I have a question.
Yes.
I mean, if you imagine that childcare piece and the people not working because of lack of childcare, I mean, that definitely rings true to me. Do we have data on that? Or is that mostly just like, we know it because we're talking to folks?
What kind of data are you looking at? We have tons of data, if that's what you want.
Like how many people were impacted strictly by childcare? Or was it a combination?
Oh, that, that I'm not sure that we have.
Or like, is it the school issue as much as childcare?
Yes, it was.
So what's impacted?
Yeah, when people were, when the schools.
Ended.
Yeah, ended. People who've had to stay home. There was no other option.
Right.
And we might have data on like, single-parent families and what that might look like. There might be a way to pull that. But not necessarily the reason was because of childcare.
Well, and where I'm going with this, I mean, I've just heard rumblings about, as we advocate to try and get some of those state dollars that aren't being used, there's concern about the folks who haven't been working. And if childcare is that issue, I think that should be an exception. And that circumstance should be taken into account. If you can't work because you can't, you don't have childcare, that shouldn't disqualify you from additional assistance.
I can tell you that from working with the people that we've worked with, nobody was out there definitely trying to scale the system. I mean, everyone that we, that called us had a true need, whether that was because, you know, and we, in January, I can tell you, we have never, in 40, in 50 years of Home Inc., we have never turned off the phones to landlord tenant calls. In January this year, we were so overwhelmed because Anne had already spent all of her money. We were the only ones in town that had any. And we had, we turned off our phones for a month. We weren't unable to take any landlord tenant calls at that time or homeownership calls. We were working exclusively with ESG. But I would, I would say that, you know, I'm sure there are some people who take advantage of the system, but we did not see that. I mean, everybody that we saw, we have documentation that they couldn't pay. Thank you very much.
So I'll go ahead and let Anne come on too.
I'm Anne Bacon with Impact Community Action Partnership. I think the last time I stood before this group was to accept the assumption agreement where Impact was Red Rock Community Action, and we assumed the word from the city for community action. So things have been going pretty good. Thank you. You're, I cannot express to you enough what the partnership between your staff at the city and the county and the other nonprofits have done. And when we get to the point of how is it possible that we could put out $9 million in the same amount of time as the state to put out $4 million? It's because of that partnership. It's because of the dedication your staff have and the ability for people to see what the real need is and what some of the real solutions are. I do want to reiterate that the thousands of households we've served, do I think there is bad actors? Yes. Do I think that we've done everything we can to deal with that? Yep. And there was a recent meme that said, "When eight people hold as much wealth as 90% of the rest of the world, the lady in the food stamp aisle is not our problem." And I believe that to be true. So when we talk about these funds, I want to assure you that the vast majority of these families really need this assistance. And while the economy is rebounding, it has not recovered, it is going to take some time. Many of these families have taken on more debt in order to cover their basic needs during this time. And they need help getting out of this hole that has been built. So Impact worked with the city originally with CDBG. We call it CDBG-CB, CDBG coronavirus in two different allotments of funds. And they were some of the first funds that came in. And so we targeted them immediately on people with rental issues. And then when CB2 came, it was very much in alignment with when the Treasury money came. So we started looking at the families that we couldn't serve in other programs. And oftentimes, that was mortgages, either traditional mortgages or contract mortgages because none of the federal funds allowed us to assist those families. And so it was through the CDBG-CB funds that we were able to help some of those families. But the big money came through the Treasury. And there, just, I'm going to try to explain this, even though it sounds completely crazy, but it's true. When the Treasury allotted the emergency rental assistance program, they did it per capita. And so they looked at the state of Iowa and said, "You have this many residents, you get this much money. But if there is a jurisdiction of more than 200,000 people, we will give those jurisdictions 45% of their allotment," which they did for both Polk County and the City of Des Moines. And so for both ERAP 1 and ERAP 2, the city and the county have received 45% of what their per capita allotment would have been. Through our partnerships, we discussed how to set up the program. We determined that the best course of action was to not add any rules to what the Treasury has already laid out. Through the legislation and through the guidance of the Treasury, there were very clear rules. Had to be below 80% AMI. Had to prioritize people below 50% AMI and those who had received unemployment. What else were the rules? We said you had to have an ID of some sort. We had to at least be able to identify that the person asking for the money was the person that we were serving. We have to pay landlords directly unless the landlord refuses to participate. To date, we've had about four landlords in total refuse to participate. And in that case, we can pay the tenant directly, but they do sign and are required to pay those arrears. We added one more rule, which was we would not pay late fees. We were paying tens of thousands of dollars in arrears to landlords. We understand that they have late fees as well. But to be able to use as much money as possible for actual rent and rent arrears and utilities, we require the landlord to say that they will not charge the late fees. say that, that they will not charge the late fees. We have had one landlord say they will not participate in the program because we wouldn't pay the late fees, but in that case, then we will then assist the tenant directly. We set up the program initially via the phone because setting up software takes time and it's difficult. And we knew how to do it because we've been doing it since the pandemic started. So the large number of the initial ERAP 1 money went through our phone systems. We understand the phone dilemma. Our average phone calls during the year are between 200 and 400 per day. And since ERAP was announced, actually since CDBG money came for rental assistance, our phone calls are 1,200 to 1,500 per day. We cannot staff to meet that need. We are able to answer about 65% of our calls on any given day and we do get some complaints about we can't answer the, people aren't answering the phones, but, and also processing the payments. We can hire staff, but the unique skillset needed to be able to follow these treasury rules and be a great provider of human services, you know, and be a great employee, that's a fairly unique skillset. And we've been hiring as quickly as we can. But the only thing that makes us slower than we are now is the inability to have enough staff. So while on the surface, we're very happy with how it's going, we know it should be faster. We cannot turn a check in under four weeks yet. So when someone applies and their stuff is complete, it takes us about four weeks to get it through all of the compliance checks, get it through fiscal, we have to add vendors if the landlord's new, there's a lot of moving pieces. But we can turn a check usually in anywhere from three to six weeks, four on average. We're trying to get faster. It's important that we get faster because on July 31st, the rent moratorium goes away and landlords can start evicting clients. They can file for eviction within three days, it can hit the courts within two weeks after that. As you can see, that time constraint makes it almost impossible to assist a family once they are late to not end up in eviction court. One of the great things about this program is it allows us to pay three months ahead. So if a family proves that they're in need and had been in need during the pandemic, we can pay all of their arrears back to March of 2020 and three months forward. One of the challenges of the state program is they have chosen not to pay ahead and they are requiring each month that they assist a family that they be late. So what that means is on August 3rd, someone could apply, but they cannot turn a check, I can guarantee you, they cannot turn a check in under three weeks. We're still processing applications for me for all the assistance. So there's a lot of moving parts. Like I said, success of the program so far is because of the staff at the city, the county and at Impact looking at the fastest way to assist these families. Someone asked, "Who are we serving?" And we're going to talk about who we're serving. I have a little piece of paper here to pass around about the demographics of the families in the city of Des Moines. The other thing you need to know about our numbers is they change hour by hour, you know. So to give you a hard number at any given moment, we can give you a snapshot, but what I'm giving you a snapshot of in these numbers are families from Des Moines. Some of them were served with ERAP Des Moines, some of them were served with ERAP County. Because Des Moines went through its funding extraordinarily quickly because the need was so high. And then the county reassigned some of their funding to be able to serve within the city. That's one of the issues with the state program right now, is even though they have statewide funding, they will not allow people from the city of Des Moines or Polk County to apply through their portal until we spend out our funding. To date, 45% of the people in Des Moines who received this assistance were under 18, 59% were female, and 36% identified as white. 13% are currently receiving unemployment insurance. 74% received income of some sort. That could include something as simple as collecting cans on the road or working a full-time job. So 74% are working right now. 14% receive some sort of retirement disability income. And at Impact, we work a lot under the federal poverty guidelines versus the AMI, which is the area median income. So when you talk about poverty, we hear those numbers a lot. 66% of those we serve were below 100%, which means that for a family of three, it's just under $22,000 a year. These are families with extreme financial needs. Another 26% were between 100 and 200%. Again, to put this in perspective, MIT says that for a family of three in Polk County to meet their basic needs, they need to earn just over $60,000 a year to do that without any assistance. And my note says, "Well, we have worked diligently to make this program as accessible as possible. It is not an easy process for tenants or landlords." So that's one thing, when people are concerned about the families we're serving and this easy money that is keeping them from working, this is an arduous process. We only have about 95% of our applications coming in online that are perfect. The rest, we need to contact the family, we need to help them gather the correct documents, we have to reach out to landlords, we have landlords who don't fill out W-9s correctly, am I right? So we can't process them. There's all kinds of paperwork that we are doing, tons of follow-up on. It's not easy. Any suggestion that this is easy money or contributes to people choosing not to work is completely incorrect. The income level allowed to receive this assistance would not discourage anyone from being at work because you could earn up to 80% of AMI. And so it's not like they're saying, "Oh, I don't want to go back to work because I won't qualify for this anymore." That's just not correct. A family of three can earn up to $65,750 annually and still qualify for this income. Very few of those families are applying, but that is not what's happening. The program is designed to not only assist families in rebounding from the pandemic, it's designed to help them recover. The other thing I want to say about this, in 25-plus years of working in anti-poverty work, I've never seen a program so well poised to create long-term change for families. The second round of funding that I am extraordinarily interested in, but we're already spending on emergent rent needs right now, doesn't have to be spent till 2025. That's about $125 million that the state could apply for that so far to date, they've decided not to apply for. That funding could do a long-term program for housing stability because there's more money for stability as well as administration. And I personally, from a low-income family advocate, thinks it is excruciatingly unbelievable that we would leave that money on the table. In fact, it won't be leaving it on the table, it'll just go to another state. This funding's all earmarked through the treasury for rent assistance and if Iowa doesn't get it and doesn't use it, it will go to another state.
Could you say that one more time about?
I can say that, I can say it over and over. Any funding that the state does not take and expend within the state will go to another state or local. We have had a discussion with Sidney Axon's office to request at the treasury. The treasury has in the contract the right to what's called clawback, where they can look at states and localities that are not spending their funding and pull it back to the treasury and reallocate sooner. Now, when they claw that money back, it is not going back into the deficit, it's not going back into the federal pot, it's going back out to other states and localities who are spending their money efficiently.
And so that amount was 125?
It's right around 125 million that hasn't been applied for yet, but there's still over $100 million sitting in the, in the.
The first batch.
In the first batch. And there's a lot of reasons why. I can tell you, it's an excruciating program to administer. It takes a huge amount of staff to dig it out to it. It's not for the weak at heart, but it is extraordinarily helpful. And the other issue is, I would always advocate when working with low-income families, do not add more rules than you have to. The rules are already difficult enough, the bandwidth these families are already using in their day-to-day life is already stretched. Don't add more rules, don't make it harder. In the short run, landlords win in this program. The economy wins in this program. All it does is dump really great disposable income into our economy. I cannot come up with one negative aspect of this program or any reason why we wouldn't do everything we could to help as many families for as long as possible. That's my sub-box.
You somewhat talked about this, but temporary need versus permanent need. I mean, we can't stress enough that there is a permanent need because of the livable wage scenario.
Right.
$10, $11 an hour is not going to be done.
Right. MIT said that for a family of three, the single income owner, a single income earner needs to make about $36 an hour to meet their basic needs without any assistance. We have to decide how we're going to handle that situation. If people can't earn enough money to meet their basic needs, how do we build a sustainable safety net for those families? This funding is one of the ways to at least see what would happen when that happens, when we're able to not only pay them month by month by month every time they're late, but actually to give them some breathing room to, to build their future. This funding, if a family is in need and qualifies, they can get up to a total of 18 months of rental assistance to help rebuild their lives. So it is a, it is, it's a very good opportunity for families.
I would say in addition to the low wage, I would also say that affordable housing.
Right, yes.
You can't find, you can hardly find fair market rental in Polk County. It's very difficult.
I have a question. I commend everybody for the work that they're doing because I know that you've taken a lot of calls and you're helping a lot of people. I have, I have two questions. And I have spoken to several Latino families who may be undocumented and I have given them information saying, "Please, please go apply, do something." And they won't do it because they are so afraid that the government is going to get a hold of their information. And I mean, I'm, I'm well aware of a family that is struggling, they can't pay utilities, they can't pay rent, but they are so afraid to ask for help because of the paperwork that's involved. Do you have any suggestions for them?
Yeah, we, we ask for a form of ID. It could be a library card. I mean, we need a form of ID. We do not require social security numbers for anyone in the household. The funding for this particular program, even from the treasury legislation, speaks nothing of the status of the families.
They're just so afraid.
I know they're afraid. And what we can do is say, "We don't need your social." That's our number one thing that usually triggers people. And to understand that the data of the individual families remains in our system unless we get a program or a programmatic audit. And at that time, they, all they would have is that person's name and current address, but there's nothing that asks their status, there's nothing that cares about their status. And when we get those program audits, it's about us, not about the families we serve. Now, the challenge is, and we have some partners in the community, the Spanish hotline, Luna, and Bart, we have a number of partners that are working with marginalized communities where people can apply through them. And they should be able to provide some assurance. Now, at the fed, at the state level through the IFA program, I can't speak to how that process works, but I know at Impact, for this particular program, there is no requirement around specific status in the United States.
And we did have some funding through Polk County House and Trust Fund and the Community Foundation that was just kind of.
Extra.
That we used for those situations when they didn't have ESG rules or they didn't necessarily have a social security number, we were able to use that other funding.
Yeah, all we can do is, you know, express to families, but.
And my other question is, is now that neighborhood groups are starting to meet again, and now I'm busy, I'm sure everybody else is busy with neighborhood groups, we oftentimes get asked, you know, where to go. Is there a cheat sheet? Is there, is there some place that we could print out something and say, "Here, contact home aid."
I had to check, Polk Care, which is the Polk County Continuum of Care, had that all over their website, most of it.
Who cares?
Who cares? And they looked and they showed, tried this, then this, then this, because we often like to have people go through a specific order and reuse the money correctly. But I do want to say that, you know, you'll, you'll hear us say how much money we've paid out, how much money is allocated, how much money is encumbered. You know, we have about 900 applications, when I checked this morning, sitting in the system still. We expect to expend our second round funding by September, which means it'll be obligated the beginning of August. And so.
Even if they apply today?
If they've applied today, they're fine, they're fine. But we don't, we do not have a never-ending amount of money. You know, some folks are like, "What are you doing to promote this?" I wish we could promote it. The problem is, we can't. I mean, if we do, you know, that's problematic. But everything, right now, a ton of stuff hinges on what the state decides to do with their funding. I will tell this group, I'll say it over and over again, if the rule is, "You can have our money, but you have to follow our rules," I would highly advise against that. If we want to follow their rules, we can just have our folks apply through their portal without taking on the additional administrative burden. So, you know, this, because that's what originally happened, was there was a discussion and it was, "Well, can you follow our rules? We'll push the money down." You know, making people be late and get an eviction or to help them is not helpful in any way. And it creates an administrative burden that's difficult to overcome.
Well, and even once they get that eviction on their record.
It's their forever, even if they don't get a eviction.
Yeah, even if we pay it and they're never evicted, that goes on their records and the next time they go for, to apply for housing, they're not going to get it.
So we're creating.
Do we have other questions?
Huge problem.
So have you had that conversation with anyone at the state or?
There's been numerous conversations.
That will happen this week. So we have put together the talking points and some conversations will occur yet this week to make the official, there, they've already, we've already unofficially said this is going to happen, we will ask for some of those funds, but it will happen this week.
Carl has a question.
Yeah, Anne, so of the, the kind of this quick sheet that you provided us, 45% are under the age of 18. So are they applying on their own or?
No, no, they're children in families, children in families.
Children in, okay, I was going to say like, wow.
No, that'd be crazy. But no, this is still, it still shows that, you know, whenever anyone, I bring these numbers up, whenever anyone is concerned about, "Does this family over here deserve it?" Or, "Should this adult be back in the workforce?" Or, "Should this person be doing this or that?" These children, 45% of the people we're helping, have zero power in that situation. They just know they need a life to live.
So, so that could be a single parent with, with two, with two or three kids?
Yes, absolutely. And I'll tell you this before I sit down, I always talk about direct assistance of basic needs under urgent conditions, much like I want you to imagine when the Titanic was going down, right? When the Titanic's going down, we have people in the water. We spend no time asking them if they had swim lessons, we take no time to try to teach them to swim, nor do we question whether or not they had the opportunity and just didn't take it. We give them the life preserver to get them heads above water and then we start talking about long-term change. We're in that situation. These folks are in the water. I don't think we need to expend a huge amount of time determining whether or not they could go get a job tomorrow or not. We just need to keep them passed. So that's my thought, just remember the Titanic.
How's the majority working?
Majority are working, yeah. So like I said, about 72% of them are working in some way.
Yeah, some people say that nobody's working, they don't want jobs. I just don't know if there's enough people to afford those jobs.
And there's only 1%. If you look at the state unemployment numbers, we're about 1% higher than we were before the pandemic, that that's 1% higher than any of us want to be, but it's not, it's not the, it's not the picture that's being painted of what's happening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Anne.
I just got one comment, you don't have to run away from me.
You got, I know where you're going.
For those of you who don't know, I'm on the Impact Board of Directors and I continue to marvel at the great work that Anne does. You know, this is such a fragile budget. I mean, there's times we're operating in the red, counting on money coming in. So to hear the kind of things that the state's trying to strangle us with does not make any sense at all. In addition, as Anne pointed out, one of the toughest things to do is manage the people that are taking these calls in because you have a certain skillset to take these calls coming in, they have to assign their time religiously in order to get paid. I just, I think you're just, you juggle quite a few bowling pins out there, you look pretty good doing it. So I'm just proud to be a member of this, but I just want to let you guys know that this is one agency that impacts in every ward throughout our city, that these people are working to make our city better. In fact, that is part of our mission is to eliminate poverty as we know it today. Appreciate it, Anne.
Thank you so, so much.
Thank you.
I have a maybe a general question from, and I wish Scott, Scott was here for this. I mean, the key piece is going to be trying to figure out how to work with the state to get those dollars. And, you know, I'm sure there's some level of advocacy going on already, I'm just not moved into that. But, but from the folks who are working on this, you know, what, and Scott, I'm asking about, what steps are taken to engage with the state and try and, try and get those dollars?
I'll let you know, we advocate constantly, but I'll let Scott explain what the city and county are doing to advocate for that, so.
Yeah, so the communication is going to be with IFA, so it'll be directly to the director. Trying to actually get some time yet this week in person with someone from the council. Trying to actually get some time yet this week in person with someone from the council. The county's been very helpful. I think the key here is, we, we also want to keep things streamlined. And we've shown that it was a very wise decision, and foresight on the mayor's part, frankly, that we got those funds directly. And so both us and the county, and we were able then to engage those funds immediately. The opportunity we have to get additional funds allow, would allow us, and I would strongly recommend this, to combine the city and the county's efforts, knowing that it's being applied through the same agency of impact. And to streamline that even further, and really just put our political will and desires together with the county, so that the state funds would go to the county and would be distributed mostly to Des Moines residents, just because of the way the demographics work, to keep that streamlined, and to potentially take even a third bite beyond that in encouraging the state to go after at least some of those second batch of funds.
What, okay. I mean, I, I would love for some messaging and for some things for the rest of us to be able to put out there that, that's going to be helpful in that effort. I mean, I don't want to poke to just poke, but I want to try and, if, if there's things that we can do to help persuade, I mean, I think we need to be doing more of that.
Yeah, I'm, we're open for suggestions on how to do that. I think the pinch point is truly IFA and.
Well, I will say, one thing I've learned through this, I am very political in the way I live my life, but I don't lose politics. And I've learned through this process that there is a ton of politics at play. So for example, the, I'm probably the last person that should ever talk to anyone in the state, because I have such passionate views on how we approach people in policy. So that would be what I would suggest, is make sure your messengers are people that people are willing to hear.
Yes. So that could be, I, I, I'm glad they have conversations with a partnership, maybe some others that have the ear of some of the decision makers.
Landlords.
We're open to any landlord associations, whatever we can need.
But you can schedule.
But these are great talking points in this presentation to be sharing with others. I think those are great tools, and we'll continue to refresh that.
Great, thank you. Lisa, do you have some last remarks?
No, yeah, just a couple of last slides, just letting you know the upcoming presentations. We're going to shoot for childcare in October, mental health in January, and I have a slide of questions, but I think we're good, so just go ahead.
If there are no other questions, do we want a break for lunch, or can we work through lunch?
Mayor Prochel, Member City Council.
We'll get started here, Mayor, yeah.
Chris Joe Hansen, Neighborhood Services Director. Today, we're going to talk about new resources for neighborhoods, specifically our Neighborhood Outreach Coordinator and our property improvement program. And more specifically about the property improvement program is our two neighborhood liaison positions that we'll be hiring for that as well, and just to explain the difference between the two positions. Neighborhood Outreach Coordinator, this is a new position, it's going to be created to support our neighborhood associations. Formerly, in the Community Development Department, we used to have four, I think it was two assistant planners, two senior planners, that worked with our neighborhood associations. That type of work is a lot different than this type of work we're talking about today. Previously, that work was more planning background, more doing neighborhood plans. This is more getting into helping the neighborhood associations, how they run, how they manage their business, and, and really looking to be more supportive of them as a, as an organization. Pleased to say the recruitment for this position will begin this week, so the job should be posted by the end of the week, I've been told. So we'll be going through recruitment process, and should have someone on board soon then. One of the main areas that this position will be working on is technical assistance for our neighborhoods. Kind of the thought in how we went into this was, once we do get our position hired, I am planning to have that position, have a meeting with our neighborhood associations, just to have that dialogue of what, what is needed, and what, what type of support they are needing from the city. We have had some internal discussions, I've known, I've talked to a number of you and heard feedback from you guys as well. But we did have a discussion with the Neighborhood Revolization Board, and we did compile a pretty good list of some of the, the items we know that we're going to have to work on with the neighborhoods. Just a couple to, to point out. The, kind of the, the one that we, we spent a lot of time at our NRB talking about was how to work with the city. A lot of times, we hear from neighborhood associations when they get a notice from planning zoning, what does that mean, what are we supposed to do? So kind of help work through the neighborhood associations on, on how to handle those types of notices you get from the city. The do's and don'ts category, a couple that I know we've talked about over, probably over the years even. One in particular, meeting etiquette. So when you have a neighborhood meeting and you have a bunch of guest speakers, whether they're elected officials, I know sometimes even state representatives come to them, it's usually most proper to have them at the front of the meeting instead of way at the end. Whether you have a, an I, a topic that's going to have a lot of debate, you know, where do you put that on the agenda? And we've even talked about neighborhood associations and their support of candidates during elections. That's something we're going to talk about as part of this, too. This is not a comprehensive list, I think, as all of you have different items, different thoughts. This is just an opportunity for us to keep expanding on this as, as we go forward.
Chris, I have a question.
Yep.
When you talk about political candidates, how many of the neighborhood associations have articles of incorporation and are nonprofits? Are all of them?
I, I don't know, that'd be something we'd have to look into. We don't, we don't require it.
You don't require.
We, we don't require it. We do require they all have bylaws, but that's something we'd have to, we'd have to look at. Maybe as a part of this position, that's something we could, we could figure out more of, though, too.
Are you going to help them get that non?
You know, we've been asked a lot of questions on it over the year. I don't think we do it for them, but I'd like to be able to point them in the right direction.
Okay.
At least provide that guidance to them.
I think that's a good tool for them.
And it's easy to do. I mean, most of the neighborhoods that I'm involved with, all are, are formed as nonprofits, and we have to send back that card to the Secretary of State every three years.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I had a request not too long ago, they, someone forgot to turn in that card, so what happens? You know, and I, I don't know. We were able to get them to answer. Yeah.
There's one thing, too, well, I don't know. I have some.
So the question, then, I'm probably, and I think I might be the only one in this position as far as my work. I have a neighborhood association that's not recognized, that probably has more.
Attendance.
Attendance than the other one, and I can't persuade them to join forces.
Yeah.
So what, how is this going to impact them? You know, I mean, they are a neighborhood, and you know, they're not the neighborhood association, but I, I believe that they should get the same treatment. I mean, they're, they care just as much about the neighborhood as to recognize the neighborhood association. So how do we, I, I don't know how, I know in the past on the council, there was some strong feelings that we're not going to do anything for an unrecognized neighborhood association by maybe one certain council member. I don't know how everyone feels about it, but I mean, I, I don't know. I, I think that they, they care about the neighborhood as much as they were recognized.
They were there before the other group was.
They actually have a bigger attendance, but I think that that's something we do need to discuss with all these neighborhood associations, that, again, this person that can help talk is, how many, how many do we need? Because some of them are so struggling. And quite honestly, if they didn't have a lifeline of the Polk County brands, we'd even have more struggling.
Yeah, there'd be no doubt about that, but. So there's a lot of public documents and guidance that will come out of this that could easily be shared. I think it's really a question for council of, when they call up and they want us to talk about etiquette, some of these things that might take more conversations, is it okay? Because we'll get the same request for someone that consolidated this assessment. I, I know, but, you know, for me to take a side and say, okay, the recognized neighborhood, I'm going awfully for the unrecognized neighborhood to be treated the difference, well, then I've just created an enemy out of, you know, the 10 people that show up at the other bunch, or so. We need to figure out a kind of a happy medium of how, and not, you know, for me in this instance, it'll be me, but I don't know, maybe there's some other ones that are in the same position, that why would we put that, you know, as an elected official? I'm not in the business of trying to piss off all my constituents and, and, you know, recognized or not.
That's the only one where, you know, because they were under CCI in the state, but, so I think it's a matter of, they are, came out of the neighborhood, they're probably more organized than as the others, so I don't know.
Historically, we've, you know, any group, you know, city, sort of, we've always responded to. Yes, come out and meet, we all, we'll gladly.
Do the officers go there?
Yeah, the biggest.
You know, I think the, the, you know, the zoning officers go there, and I think that we, but now we're creating something that, you know, I guess.
I think we are the worst.
Well, I don't know, but I'm not going to get, I don't want to get in the middle of that.
But why not?
Because I don't want to get in the middle of that. Get in the middle of their, you know, their fight that they have.
But you've got two groups and they serve different people.
I understand, I mean, I just.
Did you want me to get in the middle of?
Well, I.
I think we just have to have, I couldn't discuss, and see if that's something.
I just know that I, I told them that I would bring this up during this time, and so I'm doing it, and I'm, I'm fine with them getting the same services as the recognized one, and I told them that.
Yep.
And, you know, I mean, I just, I guess, I guess that is getting in the middle of it, but I'm not going to, you know.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not choosing sides. I'm not choosing sides. I feel, I feel it's in the cause, I'm just not.
Well, at the end of the day, I don't know how much they, except for the finding zoning, they get the services already.
Well, that's what I think, but then we're creating this new, and this is probably the most important service that we've ever created for a neighborhood association.
Well, maybe by having them be part of it, maybe we can get them all together better, by having somebody to help.
Yeah.
But maybe, maybe that's, and then you talked about Cessna, and. Northside as well.
I just think we have to watch those, I mean, we've got two on the north side.
But those are not recognized neighborhood groups.
Well, certainly, we've got a south side group that needs.
Well, they're all, they, and that is not, that's.
It's just.
Juggernaut war, and it's represented from every one of the neighborhood associations, pick someone to come to this meeting quarterly, and then they, they have a board, they have a president and a vice chair, and they, they meet and talk about all of the issues that the south side has.
But you don't have an officer come talk, you don't have, do you?
Uh, yeah, they, I mean.
Well, see, I mean, it just seems like it's there before.
Yeah, no, we, we definitely have that. We've had DART, we've had, we've had lots of different discussions. It's actually a really good time to have a, a discussion with a lot of those representatives, because then everybody hears the other issues.
And then do they take it back to their respective?
Yeah, absolutely.
I just, I, it seems like a lot of stuff, or, I mean, I appreciate they've been doing and they've.
That's something that I would not want to see go away, because that's very.
But they should get the training from their own neighborhood.
Informational, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know how this is going to affect them, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't think.
They're not going to need probably this. But, you know, I just want to make sure that if they do have a, a need, that we are going to say, okay, we're going to, we're going to help them also. But they'll get their, they'll get all their assistance through their individual neighborhood associations.
Well, and, and what's nice about the groups like Northeast Neighborhood Friends, not everybody has a neighborhood association in their neighborhood. I mean, yes, they have 52 neighborhood associations, but they have people coming to the meeting that simply don't belong to a neighborhood association.
Okay, didn't mean to.
No, no, I get it, yeah. All right, the next one, and this one I know has been presented in front of the city council before, is the Engaged DSM, the Resident Academy. This position will also work with the city team that's working developing that program, and working with the city departments and facilitating the meetings. So this, this position would be a fixture as part of that program as well.
So what will this position do? Is this the same position that we're talking?
Yes, same position. So I'm kind of going over the first four or five different job responsibilities. Okay, so Resident Academy. Next one is the Neighborhood Recognition Policy. So this is, this policy is what, is what establishes our neighborhood associations throughout the city. So this is where we have the, you know, the rules that the neighborhoods have to follow, often they have to meet, the neighborhood surveys are part of this. So this policy, the, the Neighborhood Outreach Coordinator will oversee this policy. Usually what comes out of this is when a neighborhood association is going to be newly formed, or when one is looking to expand their boundaries, which I know happens, I know councilmen get.
Yeah, Watchers Heights.
Yeah.
Where, and that's a relatively new neighborhood, where David has done a remarkable job, given support, and now he does want to expand it.
Yeah.
But he's went through all of these things, and we've been very helpful. And now, I mean, he's asking, I think he's asking Carl and I, because he's seen us, about, you know.
Yeah. So this position will work with those types of issues, concerns that come up. Usually every couple of years, there could be a neighborhood that's not meeting our requirements, and could be disbanding, so that's what this, this person will work with as well. Every year, there is an annual survey we send out, just to make sure neighborhoods are meeting and follow our rules. So that's what this position will do, do as well. One thing I am wanting to do more of than we've, we've ever historically done is, you know, usually when neighborhood associations are formed, they, they're really not focused on what the city's policy or intent is on why they're forming. So really, to get out and work with the neighborhoods on what the purpose is, kind of more of that communication link between the city and the neighborhoods.
Yeah, they need that.
The last final major responsibility for this position is the Block Grant Challenge Program. This is the one that we just started at the beginning of July. This was the one, I think, as you guys recall, that we're partnering with Invest DSM for the first year to do this throughout all of our neighborhoods throughout the city. So this first, this staff person eventually will be leading this program in the neighborhoods outside of the special investment districts. This first year, we're kind of doing it a little piecemeal with Invest DSM, kind of really being the main leaders of the program, but I have two staff in our office right now that are kind of learning this. So when the Neighborhood Outreach Coordinator starts, they'll be able to pick that up as well.
Are we hoping to give them more money next year?
More than the 2.5?
200,000.
Oh, well, that's up to you. You're in the Invest.
No, no, it's not my money, it's for the outside of the district. It's outside of Invest.
It'll be part of our, our budget discussion. How much of the sales tax should go to that effort?
Wait, wait a second.
For these block grants.
This block grant of challenge, isn't all the money coming from Invest DSM? No, this is outside of the Invest DSM.
This is for people outside.
No, the way that I understood, that you guys were, but the Invest DSM, or us, out of the 2.5 million each year, you were funding this throughout the city, not just in this. So we're, we're putting in 200,000 for this?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't note that. Was that in our budget that we agreed to?
Yes.
Okay, I must have missed that. We just, we're using them as administrator.
Yes.
To handle this 200,000.
First year to get it up and going, and in this position, we'll take it over with the sales tax budget, which I understand the 200,000 is not going to be enough long-term for the rest of the city, we'll have, we'll have to. Is the county participating 200,000?
Not in this, this is just for, you know, for the people outside the Invest area, because they, so it was really a way to say that outside of the, those four areas, we are still going to try to help the city. Other areas of the city, so on your block, if you found five people or your area, you could get, you can get the matching grant. We were at a couple block parties yesterday that did that great area. It was great to see the neighbors come together and appreciative of the efforts and the amount of improvements they're doing to their houses, which has, for, they maybe got a 2,500, but they put in 10,000 by the time they got done, it made it.
I would say. I would say before we commit any more money to that program, we better look at what our property maintenance code is going to do. And we're gonna need to have additional revenue to help people that can't afford to fix their homes.
Yep.
In an adequate way to do the maintenance. I mean, if we're doing a property maintenance code, we're gonna have to put probably a lot more than 200,000 in a fund to help people that can't afford it.
Exactly.
Okay, I just, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with putting money back into the neighborhoods, but we better be smart about how we're gonna do it and what we're gonna do. I thought that that fund, when they're talking about it, was strictly from the 2.5 million because it wasn't all getting used in all the neighborhoods, you know, from Invest DSM. I didn't think that, I know my neighborhood hasn't. I mean, they did not a very good job of spending the money and we've had.
Money's still there.
Yeah, I understand that and it's rolled over and they, we had a neighborhood meeting down there at Columbus and McKinley and, you know, they were, the, they had a report, they had a report from Amber and Chris, myself was there and we, we talked a lot about that where the money's still there, but they're not using it.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's, that's where I assumed and then they talked about this and I thought that, you know, they acted like it was Invest DSM money, not city employee money.
Their administration.
I know, but this, yeah.
So the, the citywide effort is just getting started. I, I'm hopeful that we'll have an understanding of the, the desire and the number of applicants, the amount, if you will, before we get into our budget discussions this winter. So then I can come back to you and say, you know, we had hundreds of applications through Invest DSM, but, you know, this is what the magnitude that we need to cover that moving forward. We'll have better information once we open up that window.
But when we do that property maintenance code, I mean.
At the same time.
Right, we don't know what type of funding, I mean, we don't know who's gonna be able not to afford some of the improvements that we're gonna need to make in some of these homes and who can. And I understand we're gonna put a lien on there, you know, when, when the house is sold, we're gonna get back some of that money, but we better have a little kitty that's gonna actually do what we need to do.
Okay, but the question, the question is magnitude and that every year we'll have to adjust that.
When did the applications start going out to the neighborhood, the neighborhood?
Uh, July 1st.
Yeah, it started July 1st. Oh, it's open right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So in a few weeks.
They're already getting, they are already getting calls and they're already getting people on.
You don't, you haven't had any applications?
Um, we, we had a meeting last Tuesday and I think we have one tomorrow night, kind of a, just for questions from, from applicants. So we had a, a small handful last Tuesday and I'll find out tomorrow how we're doing, but it's, the word's getting out there pretty.
It is, you know, for us, for me and the folks that I represent, it's probably a trust factor.
Yeah, yeah.
They don't understand how giving them free money to do anything, to be honest with you, because no one has taken really advantage of it in McKinley and Columbus Park. I mean, there's been a few, but not enough to really get the word out, so they are, they are very skeptical and wary.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not, you know, no one's ever, ever given me a match of anything. No one's ever given me any money to do anything from the city. That's all they did is, you know.
People are just like, drive over to 44.
No, I, you're right. I mean, I, I understand that good things are happening and I shared that with the, you know, the 15 people that were at the neighborhood meeting, but I can tell they're, they're definitely is.
Well, they have to be willing to, to make an investment too.
That, that's, that is true and, and, you know, they have to have the income to be able to make that investment. A lot of them in this area, I know we picked this area because we thought it was the biggest boat. They don't have a lot of extra income.
Yeah. I'm, I'm hopeful also after we.
But this is just the grant part of over there, they even have better opportunity for pullout loans and.
I'm, I'm hopeful after we have our Neighborhood Outreach Coordinator and they start to work with the neighborhood, you know, they're there, they could help to promote the program, build a little more trust. You know, right now, it's kind of, you know, we don't have that face of it.
No, you don't.
It's a little difficult, but I.
You know, we haven't met for 16, 17 months and, you know, I mean, it was our first meeting back and, you know, it's still a very limited amount of people that participate in McKinley and Columbus Park. We had more people there at this time than we've ever had.
Yeah.
But they were still asking a lot of questions like, "Really, you're gonna match this?" and, you know.
Wait, Joe, was this at a neighborhood meeting or an Invest DSM?
No, it was at a neighborhood meeting.
Okay.
It was last Tuesday.
It's a neighborhood.
They were.
It's a neighborhood.
Yeah, it's a neighborhood in my ward that the money, Invest DSM money is being used in.
Because in Ward 2, it's could be used for commercial, but they're not really reaching individuals yet.
Yeah, they've started more.
But not, not a lot.
Well, it gets back to they've gotta want to give it to, but same thing with Columbus Park.
Yeah, you have to have, you still have to invest it and you have to have money yourself and you have to be willing to make that investment.
And you have to be willing to find four other homeowners in, in an area that.
You can see from your front step.
But that's just a block grant, they have the other thing, they have other things.
Right. And they like, you know, they, they talk a lot about. Oh, I know there is, it is, I think it's a great program, we just gotta get people for.
The, this next slide, and I apologize for putting this topic on here without having it be the last slide of our presentation, but this is not to talk about the program yet, but I, I did want to make sure we did talk about the, there's two property improvement liaisons that I think some of you have, have been confused a little bit about between the difference between doing that and Neighborhood Outreach Coordinator. So I have this slide on here, number one, first to give you a timeline, so you know when this is gonna be coming back to the city council. First big discussion we'll be having September 13th at a workshop and that's for us to present at a very high level. This is what the program is. These are the type of items we're gonna be enforcing on.
Are you talking about property maintenance?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that, September 13th meeting is to have that dialogue to make sure we're all on the same page. After that, we're gonna start doing neighborhood meetings, public meetings. Any group that basically wants to meet with us, you know, we'll, we'll be willing to talk to them about this program. After that, come back to city council, have a draft ordinance, kind of discuss any changes that we've been making. That was in November we're talking about. And then the council approval schedule would be starting November 15th, December 6th, and then the December 20th.
So how are we going to address folks that can't afford, that don't have the income? We'll address that on the 13th. To, to make the improvements that we're going to require, because if we don't have adequate funding for that.
Yeah.
Immediately, that will be taken up at the State House and we will be preempted from that.
Yeah.
And immediately, because they're, if we, if we don't have the resources to, to help people that can't afford a fixer siding or fixer roof or do things like that, and then they still might rent us, I don't know, we'll see.
What other communities have a property code? Do all the other communities have?
Nobody around here.
There's, in Iowa, yes, but maybe not.
The, for the 13th, when we get to that point, we need to have that program flushed out. The one thing I would tell you, it's gonna have to come with a budget, there's gonna be existing resources already in the community we're gonna have to rely on for this type of work. The, the two positions that really help drive this are the two property improvement liaisons. So that is, those two positions are the ones that work with the homeowner to help them find what programs are available. So they're gonna work, hold their hand, take them to what service is needed.
You're gonna hold the hand of the 90-year-old that's getting on social security.
Yes.
Yours telling her that she has to, you know, and I, I don't know what it's gonna consist of, but it could be.
Fix that broken window.
You're gonna have to fix that broken window or you've got a, you know, you've got a, an ash tree that's ready to fall on your neighbor's house and fall on your house and that tree's gonna need to be cut down.
Right.
And we're gonna have the resources to be able to, and we'll put a lien on our property and we're gonna take care of that, hold their hand and find a list of contractors that would either fix the window, cut down the tree, or fix the driveway, or do whatever we need to get done.
That's the goal.
Okay.
Yep, and that's what those two positions are to work with. That's, that's separate from our Neighborhood Outreach Coordinator that we're talking about. These two are specifically, yeah, yeah.
So part of the guiding principles we're still gonna need to work through is, I was not intending it to be 100%, right? There's gonna be skin in the game by the, the property owners.
Or if they don't have it. I mean, wonder if, I mean, wonder if they're living on a fixed income where they can barely pay their property taxes in their utilities because they are on a fixed income. What do you do then? I mean, we've got people living that are making less than $30,000 a year.
The question is whether they own a, own a home and then we'll have to work through that.
So if they own a home and they're an elderly person and they need a roof to provide safe housing for them.
Sure.
Is there some type of mechanism that we put it on and then when they sell that home, we get paid back?
That's always the intention, yeah, yes.
Yeah, so because they can live in their home, they can't afford to go to a nursing home, they stay in their home, we're actually doing, we're helping make it a safe place for them to live.
But there might be NFC money too.
Right.
That's where the park, existing parties might make a lot of sense.
A 90-year-old woman, well, a 90-year-old woman is not gonna, she's just gonna live with the roof the way it is.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what happens. They're not gonna incur debt.
But their site, if their siding's falling off and they're grabbing down the neighborhood and it's unsafe, those are the, I mean, that's what's, not creating a good taxable value for the rest of the neighborhood.
And they're, they're losing their wealth too. I mean, some of this is maintaining their asset for them to pass on. It's the goal.
But what happened to our emergency maintenance program that we had out there? People whose sewer line went out that you used to work with rebuilding together? I'm told that that program is no longer there?
Not, not right now. That one is, we are pausing that one right now. We did have some staffing changes coming out of COVID that made us just pause it. We're kind of re, relooking at it right now. The one thing I will tell you though, at the, going through this process on what types of programs are needed for the property improvement program, we have, we're gonna have the capacity to ramp up any rehab program we need to have in-house to do that, but, but to answer your questions, the, I know what program you're talking about, the emergency repair loan program.
Those are people that are calling us saying, "I need some help."
Yeah.
And there's nothing out there for them right now.
There's, there's a couple of programs existing in the community that we've been able to refer them to right now, but the, that program we did, I think it was around, I think it was about 20 applicants we do a year. So we're just relooking at that right now.
Been there seven years, never knew one single word about that.
Very small program.
Yep.
Sewer repairs, roofs.
Yeah, no idea.
So who is going to inspect, to determine what needs to be done on this?
The. Well, I, yeah, maybe I can explain a little bit more detail. I, I totally understand the council's concern about being preempted by the state. Gone through it a couple of times, it's a very real thing. We have got to be able to convince the residents, neighborhoods, and the state that we can handle this program in a way that is not a financial burden on the 90-year-old woman who can't put the roof on and chooses to live there even though it's not safe, that we have a program set up for how to help her through that. And the liaison is gonna be the person that goes to people like Principal Financial Group, the Boy Scouts of America, church groups, and builds community support for hours and painting hours or, you know, how do you have a group of people that are gonna go out and help repair the broken window? Now, roofs and things, those are a little more expensive, they're a little bit bigger and it may be an NFC loan, forgivable loan, it could be there's an asset because of the, the property can support the loan for the roof, but, but some people don't know how to walk through that process. How do you apply for the mortgage? How do you go to NFC? How do you walk through those, those complicated things that even, even when I went through it, it, it's not easy. So liaison is the person that says, "Okay, here's what we have to do to get through it. Here, here are the resources. We can get your window fixed because the Boy Scouts need a badge or something and so they're gonna come out and help you fix your window and here's gonna be the long-term plan on your roof." It's not gonna be, a notice goes out in 30 days and then we're gonna do it. Boom. It could take two years for some of these people to get through the process of how do you find the resource, how do you pull it together, and what's the plan for the run, for the fix-up? It's not gonna be, I, I try to, to equate it of, it's not, it's not a code enforcement process.
Okay.
It's not a code enforcement thing.
We're not gonna come to the heavy hand.
No, 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 that's why I'm calling it property improvement instead of a code enforcement thing. It's gonna be a different group of people. It's gonna be over here, code enforcement's over there.
Okay.
Yes, you're gonna have inspectors go out.
And they'll see.
And they'll see and then you go to, and, and, you know, with the exterior check.
Is it complaint-based or are we gonna be proactive and kind of?
Well, it will probably, we'll have enough to work to do just on complaints. I'm, I'm not saying that we won't eventually maybe be a little more proactive, but, you know, if, if you put in, say, a million dollars of the city money to, to start the funding.
Right.
I was just throwing out a nice number because I like it. But then you get, but then you get, pardon?
I'm on two.
Two, okay, two, two's better. But then you also get civics, civic groups that want to have some activity and you say to principal, "When you do your, your civic hours that they give people, can you volunteer some of your hours to our program?" Liaison goes out and looks for those hours and, and matches things up. And then matches the person up to the programs and walks them through the paperwork and walks them through, how do you get it and how do you get it done? So they may get a notice, you know, "You have exterior peeling paint, you need to, you need to paint your house." And they say, "Oh, I can't do it this summer," or "I can't do it right now." And then we go to somebody and say, "If you'll donate paint, we've got a group that can paint the house for her." But it might not be this summer.
It's just like what Hattie used to do. They used to do that, where they go out and help people just.
Yeah, it's Rock, Rock the Block, they used to call it, other thing. That's what we're envisioning.
How are we going to know if they can't afford it or if they can? Everybody's gonna say, "I can't afford it, I'm not painting my house."
Income-based.
Well, they're gonna have to come in and do an application with liaison saying, "I can't paint my house, here's my source of income." That we're gonna have to verify. I mean, it's not gonna be without, it's not gonna be without some.
How do you set up the parameters of who can and who can't afford it?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's sort of the guidelines you were talking about previously with, you know, with the funding on, on some of those assistance programs. We'll have to look at what's the best method of figuring out what the income guidelines are gonna be. We have good people out there that have already done some of this work on income.
Might be free and reduced lunch, we might try to piggyback on.
Yes.
Okay.
Right, there's also the piggyback approach, you know?
Okay.
If, if this program can do the sewer line break, but this program can help with If, if this program can do the sewer line break, but this program can help with the windows or, or this, you marry it. You know, it's not going to be a one-size-fits-all.
That's a holistic approach to getting people help to fix their property.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm all about helping the neighborhoods and fixing their property.
This is a social work thing. This is not a, this is not a code enforcement.
And you know what? That needs to be our message out from the very beginning and be proactive at that message.
They're going to try to help you.
This isn't the heavy hand, this is a social...
And by the time we get to September thirteenth, part of the rollout to you is going to be explain how, how we're selling it. What, what is the, what is the outreach going to look like so that when we go out into the community, this is a social work, not a code enforcement effort? That, this is not a code enforcement effort and we need to be very clear with people that it isn't.
Are we able to use some of the, the COVID federal dollars to, to put into some of this money to fix some of these things?
Not the CBD COVID, but we will look at the federal.
Can I just ask in a case where, you know, the house is, sort of, where they have the means, they choose not to, they have more than the means.
Now, I'm not saying that that won't eventually trip into, you refuse to do it, so then it becomes an enforcement issue, but it's certainly not going to lead that way.
It's not the start, okay.
Yeah, the, the one...
I can deal with that, that's fine.
I mean, if you refuse, that's a whole other issue.
And you know that they have the means.
They have some...
The, the guiding principles document is the one document we talked about to try and help answer a lot of these questions, you know, what to do in this case scenario. So I, I know in every ward, I could almost tell you which, which house everyone's thinking about, because we've heard of it and it's owner occupied and we don't have the enforcement tool to do it right now. But the guiding principles is really supposed to get to that piece, you know, how we operate this and to underscore what Sue's been talking about, this is more of a program than an enforcement piece.
Chris, one thing, I'd say it's all kind of steer cores homeowners, what about landlords? I mean, there isn't a single property in any of our wards that hasn't been a highlighted, blighted property with terrible landlords and Sam, you know the one I'm talking about? What, what are we going to do about that? Because I'll tell you what, the complaints that I get almost always are with absentee landlords letting the, the residents run amok in the place and turning the place upside down and not taking care of anything, so...
But we're supposed to have a, the rental enforcement should be the...
We can't. Sam and I have been running around in circles on this and it comes down to who's living there and not the landlord and that's what's really pissing me off.
And I think that part of what's happened to the, to rental code enforcement is, we were on a good, a good roll with our, you know, increasing our enforcement and getting some things done and then COVID hit and, and so we just got sort of backtracked and derailed and now INRGO's here and we're still trying to catch up and, and so it's going to take a little while to get it back on track. For the one that you're talking about and it's the actors, I do have some ideas on how to do sort of a different type of thing with the landlord saying, the activities of the residents are creating a nuisance and you need to take care of the activities of the residents. I have to work that out more with legal, it's sort of in, in the inception thought process, but there is a code, chapter forty-two, three, whatever it is, talks about nuisance, landlords being, creating a nuisance. So we'd have to build the case and then we'd have to take it to court and see if the court would agree that the behavior of the tenants is a nuisance that the landlord has to control and it would be a test case, so we have to...
And I know it's tough to say, try and tell these people, it's going to take time. You know, it's one of the things that we need to make sure, because we all have problem areas that the landlords are just terrible and we got to hold their feet to the fire. They're the ones causing it because they don't even care what's going on in their place. I don't know if they've got a damaged deposit that they have to forfeit, but, you know, a lot of these people that are tearing places up don't care and they'll be gone. And it just, it makes the neighborhoods unsettled and so we need to really come in and out with something better than what we've got to work on that.
Yep, and I will continue to explore all those better than we're doing it now options.
But Sue, just with the property improvement program, the, the property is going to be looked at regardless if it's owner occupied or if it's a rental. And so that property has to meet the standards of this new program.
That's right, Sam, but I, I, I'm trying to get to the point, whose property is it? Is the...
It's absolutely the owner's property.
That's what I want.
The owner's property with this new code and then the owner is going to be responsible.
That's exactly what I want to hear.
And the owner will be responsible and the owner has an income from the rental of that property and so we won't be, he won't be using any city funds to be fixing it, he'll be fixing it himself.
Or if we do fix it, we hit it right there, can't take it away from his rent. I mean, these are, I just, you know, this is one of the most frustrating things that I have to deal with, you know, we're eight years of doing this stuff. This is just the constant pain in the side of all the neighbors because they, they're not, they never get to be part of the community. They don't want to be a part of the community. They're just going to slob in, slob out.
We have the same, I have one on South East Fifth, it has the same, all the windows are busted out, it's a, it's a rental and, you know, they'll move in, they'll move out, there's, you know, garbage and toys and all kinds of stuff and, you know, you've got all the houses around it that are very well-maintained.
Yeah, that's right.
One, that is just a nightmare and you know what, that, we have no way of enforcing anything right now.
I want to make sure that the landlord's feet are held to the fire. That's the only way we can get any action on these guys.
I agree.
I agree.
And I've got one other question, Chris. I noticed we got things going back, we're going to take a couple of slides back. We're going to do website creation, use of social media, a lot of good things here. One thing that I've run across in, in a lot of the more active neighborhoods is they do like block parties, like Beavdale Fall Festival, National Night Out, and each group has to go through and get their own insurance. Is there a way that we can get an umbrella policy for all of our neighborhood groups so that they can do the kind of action without having to have a huge insurance policy for everything that they run?
More than likely not, but it's worth finding out, at least if there isn't a boilerplate, some way of simplifying that process.
Simplify it and, and bring the cost down to a manageable level. You know, a lot of neighborhoods would like to have like a block party or something, but the cost of getting that insurance washes it away, then they don't do it. And I'd hate to think that we're not letting neighborhoods get together, get that cohesiveness they want to build because they can't get the insurance.
And you create one, five oh one, two three of neighborhoods.
That's my thought.
And you have a non-profit neighborhood and then have insurance policy.
And then individuals have their own membership that they could apply and get one, because there's one neighborhood and where they had that monument sign, it passed them like fifteen hundred dollars a year just to have the insurance for the sign because they put the sign on.
In the right way.
In the right way. So, I mean, that's a ridiculous, well, it's kind of a ridiculous expense in a way for fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, I've never, I've never, that's, that's a great, it, I'll backtrack, it would be possible if we're the ones paying for it, so I've got to, let me talk to the insurance companies to see how...
Well, thank you. I, I can't think of something that brings a neighborhood more together than block parties or National Night Out or what, but if you can't do anything because you got to buy the insurance, just throw it out the door.
They'll replace you.
That's why we're here, we're here to improve our neighborhoods.
I'm just saying as a way...
There has to be a distinction between the neighborhood-sponsored events versus a nonprofit coming to town that, that wants to use our street, so we have to make some pretty clear distinctions of whose events are qualifying for that insurance.
So would that neighborhood person would get all the neighborhoods under that nonprofit, under that umbrella? Then they're all listed under that umbrella and those are the ones that the insurance would cover?
Could.
Potentially.
I'm just, I'm just trying to, because there's...
That's a great, I mean, I think that's...
Disconnection.
I'm happy, always ran Greater Eastside Development Corporation and I know the neighborhoods over there used to go through him to get...
To avail for the insurance?
To get a rider for, when they had a pass.
I just think we've got a cheaper way to help them in a greater way because the costs that they're all incurring ends up, like I said, if they don't get the grants from Pol County, then they don't have the ability to continue and that's another aspect. If we believe in our neighborhoods, should we not be administering a minimal amount for their postage and things like that to help encourage new membership? So that's another thing that we...
And we could, we could limit it to one event a year or something.
Yeah, I just think that we should be encouraging some, if, I don't think we should have to rely, not that we can't ask Pol County for it, but, I mean, these, all these neighborhoods, most of them didn't, you know, some noted, right, go there, some don't, and I just think it's a, if we could just say, if you're sanctioned by us or whatever, this is what you get. And yes, I know it's an expense, but for fifty-two neighborhoods, if you put two thousand in each or a thousand...
I don't know how that would conflict with the neighborhood plans because I know our neighborhood plan, we put in there that we would do fundraising and that was a requirement that the city planners worked with this on. I've not seen any city plans that recognizes neighborhoods where it doesn't talk about